Okay, thanks everybody for joining. It has been a wonderfully glorious spring day and I appreciate you all taking time out of that spring day to be with us. We've already had Bailey join us from Adams and she'll be back at 4:30. And Dawn, glad to see you. Good to have you here.
I've been here. They're just acting crazy.
And that would be different how?
Well, I signed on about 10 after and it went in and said, no one is allowing you in the meeting. So I guess y'all don't want me in the meeting, so I'll dismiss myself.
Okay, well, let's get started. I'm sure we're going to run out of time with our study session, but Marcus, we're going to turn it over to you.
Okay, so we are moving to chapter 12 in the Courageous Conversation book. I want to make sure you have access to this link that's in the chat. This is an early preview, so this is not really, I'm just doing what I want, which is giving you a draft of the equity policy that the Coalition has been working on. The Courageous Conversation chapter in it, Glenn Singleton shares a vision of what racially equitable school system looks like. But our students and staff and families have been working on a vision of what a racially equitable school system looks like for several months. And so I just want to start with their work as opposed to unpacking Glenn Singleton's vision. And there's a great deal of overlap in those two anyway. But I want you to have this recognizing that we are still meeting with a ton of community groups. And so this is not nearly a finished product, but this is the current thinking of a Coalition of students and families and staff that have been working on this. I'm going to try to share screen and I know there is a request for copies of the slides, so I'm going to send the copies of the slides afterwards, right after this meeting. My tendency has been to share materials in advance only if we're expecting you to review it in advance because there's things that change as we're moving closer to the time. So if that's not workable, then let's have a chat about that at some point. But that's why you haven't had it before. And these slides are changing. Every time I interact with a different group, all these slides end up changing. So we want to make sure that we don't, nothing's ever really a finished product. We're all working in progress. But for this conversation, we're looking at how do we explore a systemic framework for achieving racial equity in schools? Are you able to see the slide? Okay, and so, one, the prompt I wanted to start you with is we've spent kind of the last three to four months engaged in this Courageous Conversation book study. And so I just want to hear from you, to what extent has the time been necessary or worthwhile? And where should we go from here? And if you each kind of respond to that, that would be great. So I'll start with Martha, who prefers not to be referred to as President or Madam.
Yeah, especially Madam. Thank you, Marcus. I think this has been so worthwhile for me personally and for us as a board and cabinet group. To be able to have these kinds of conversations is unlike any other, they're unlike any other type of conversation we've had either as a board or as a cabinet board team. And quite honestly, I don't know where we go from here because I'm learning all along the way.
Thank you. Dawn?
Yeah, I'd like, I know this is worthwhile. I've been one pushing for racial equity since I've been on the board and in the community. Where do we go from here? I say we continue on because it's going to open and broaden our input on how to bring change. It's good to see that the board as well as the administrators are willing to spend time and look at this racial equity in education. And as we look at it in education, we can see where it's racial inequities in society and to take a stand and to speak up. And where would we go? We continue on with the work because it's an ever-going, it's alive and well every day work that has to be done. And yes, it may bring some of us out of our comfort zone and in our thinking, but eventually we will come to understand the importance of this. So I'm enjoying it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracia?
I agree. I think that the last three to four months has been really helpful. I think it's been, I think, helpful for the entire group here to go through it together. And I know that other groups have been participating in similar discussions as well. I think it's good to have, to be able to level set and ensure that everyone understands the same language essentially, the same terms and ideas and theories that we're talking about. So that common understanding, I think, is going to be really helpful. I think it's added, for me at least, has the added bonus of really connecting with everyone on this group, even though it's only been via Zoom. You know, there's a level of, I guess, a higher level of comfort that I have with this group and hearing everyone's thoughts and ideas and comments as we've gone through this, I think, has been really helpful. Kind of just from a personal relationship building piece. Again, even though it's been via Zoom, I think the topics we've talked about have been so important and necessary. I think has been an added benefit, I think, for probably a lot of people in this group, not just me.
Thank you. Raymond?
I really enjoyed our sessions together and learning more about equity and the related topics. Has been, it's been a personal journey for me. It's opened my eyes on some things. And so I really like where we're going with this. I do, like the board, like that the board is discussing this. And I would then tend to serve all students to help all students succeed. I do have some reservations and I don't know, maybe I'm misinterpreting some of the readings, especially chapter 12. And I can see now that a lot of what we've read and studied in the last few months is really based on critical race theory. And I do, I do really agree with a lot of critical race theory tenants. The major ones are the key tenants of critical race theory. I am however, just, this is what I'm thinking about. It's just, I have some reservations on that. It, and you know, even Singleton made some statements in the earlier chapters that kind of puts people, it divides people, right? And it divides people between oppressed and the oppressor. And, you know, I felt oppressed 40 years ago when I was in high school, but I don't feel oppressed now. I believe I can go out and do, if I want to go further in my education, I could do that. I can, if I have the means, I could buy a home wherever I want to, just about, you know. I can get a job wherever I want to in any of the United States in America. I could go to the golf course, which 40 years ago, that was probably not something you saw a person of color. But I think, you know, we've made great strides and great, I don't know what we call them, maybe moral changes in the United States with people in the United States. So we're not, I tend to disagree that that racism is so prevalent that it's keeping people from achieving their dreams and goals. Which, to me, if I were to internalize that, that would take away power from me. And you know, you've heard my story, right? My paternal grandfather and my father, that they faced, I thought, a lot of racism. In fact, you know, they weren't allowed into stores, certain stores or restaurants and restrooms and all those type of things. And they didn't let that stop them from achieving their goals. So they took that power despite racism, discrimination, and despite whatever they faced. They continued to go for their goals and their dreams and make a better life for their families. So I think that, I am worried about the message to our students that the reason why they are not succeeding or the reason for these disparities between students of color and white students is all due to racism. So I am kind of thinking about that and how we can, how I'm processing or how I can, if I'm good with supporting that. Again, you know, I don't think we're the country we were in the pre-sixties. You know, not even, we made a lot of strides. And again, I don't feel oppressed. And this approach outlines or divides people into the oppressed and the oppressor. And I don't see all white people as oppressors. I don't see all white people as trying to keep the people of color or students of color down. I don't see teachers in our school district waking up and saying, you know what? I'm going to go to school and keep all the white kids. I'm going to help them be successful and all the students of color that I'm going to make so difficult for them that they can't achieve on whatever test or graduate and so forth. So I just having trouble with that piece as well. And it seems like, you know, we talked about white privilege and so forth. And it seems like white people have it better than people of color. And I don't, I don't see that either. I don't see, I don't see all white people having it better than people of color. And I mean, we're all at different levels in our lives and we've all accomplished different things. And so some of us have gone through hard times, all of us have, and some of us are in good times. So I don't see that, you know, as a, and I know I'm taking long, but I'll, a couple more minutes here. But I, you know, I have certain privileges in my family. I'm the eldest. I have certain privileges as a veteran. I have certain privileges as a board member, as, you know, in my profession, but it doesn't have nothing to do with the color of my skin. So, you know, I always go back to what Martin Luther King said, that it's, that we need to judge each other on the content of our character and not by the color of our skin. And it seems like critical race theory does that division between people of color and white people. And it's all based on skin color. So, you know, Amor would like to figure out the direction I'd like to go is how can we, okay, focus on racism, right? Because racism does exist and it has existed for a long time since whenever, right? It's a problem. It's a human problem and it continues to be a problem. But I think that if we work, instead of dividing between people of color and white people, I think if we combine forces, if we look at our similarities, those things that kind of bind us together, I think we can make more progress if we do that rather than divide and say, you're the oppressor. You have privilege and I don't and I'm going to do whatever I can to take away your privilege. Or, or that white people have to confess their sins, right? And be atoned for their sins, past sins. I can't wait for white people. I have never waited for white people to confess or atone for their sins. I'm going to do my thing and I have done. And so has my family and we took that example from my father. So those are my thoughts when we go forward, moving forward is your question. I, again, I think it's better that we all work together. We focus on race, but we also focus on what's the similarities. That is, we want all students to achieve, we want all students to realize their dreams and goals. We want them to be, have the best life that they can once they leave the Yakima School District and that they're be prepared. And so, not that they can't achieve because there's racism and structural racism and so forth. But I'm trying to, I think more if we work together and focus on similarities and help our students achieve, then I think that's the direction we should head. Thank you.
Thank you. Norm?
First of all, before I say anything else, I'd like to just compliment my colleagues on this board for the work that we've been doing in this process. And I know that a lot of people in the district are doing this work, but our colleagues are the only people doing it on camera in front of everybody. And I think that's, that is a unique risk. And I think that's, it's not always been easy and it's been, but I think like Gracia has said, it's brought us closer together. We've learned a lot about each other. And that's, the nature of doing the tough work is that you do, as Raymond hopes, you do end up working together more rather than in silos. And I think, I think we've made a tremendous start and I think we have a lot to do. And I think we're going to get some pushback and I think we're going to need to be ready for that. One example would be, Raymond mentioned critical race theory. I don't know if you read The Herald Republic, but in the last, there've been two full-page ads in the last couple of weeks put out by the Washington Policy Council, which makes it sound like they're an independent little research group that just does neutral things. Well, the Washington Policy Council is funded by the Koch Brothers and it's funded by the Evergreen Freedom Foundation. And it's putting out stuff out there that is, they're very sneaky about it. So we need to pay attention to that and they're making it sound so good that this conversation that we're having is a dangerous and evil thing to do when it's actually a good thing to do. But we're going to get some pushback because they're, they have a lot of money and they're putting that stuff out there. The other thing that worries me is that it tells me this work isn't done is that we have legislatures all over the country right now actively creating voting processes to deny people of color the right to vote because they know how those people vote. They know where they vote and they're systematically trying to take those opportunities away. And that is, that is not, you know, that's, that's not a problem we can ignore. That those freedoms that we've worked so hard to get can, are very fragile. The other thing is, right now, another thing that scares me is ask any Asian-American person if they feel safe walking down the street, especially if they're an elderly woman or an elderly man. And we can see examples all over the country where because of the racist thinking going on that people decide, well, it's an okay thing now to attack an Asian person and blame them for COVID. So there's all kinds of things that if we're paying attention that are scary and that we have a lot of work to do to continue to move forward. And that's not saying we haven't moved forward. Things are certainly different than they were when I was a little kid. But we, it never, it never moves forward without a few steps back along the way. And so again, we can never, I think the bottom line is, we cannot be complacent. And even in situations here, I taught, I hadn't mentioned this, but I taught the diversity course for teachers for Heritage University. And one of the things that we did in that course is we asked people to gather comments you've heard in, from teachers. What are the things that they say to kids or say to parents? And you wouldn't believe some of the things that are still being said out there to kids and to parents and from teachers, usually white teachers. And I'll just tell you one of them. And one of them was a teacher in the Lower Valley, was a PE teacher in an elementary school. And anytime the kids spoke Spanish to each other, he would punish them. And he would say, you do not speak Mexican in my class. Well, first of all, Mexican is not a language, so that teacher's an idiot. But second of all, he's immediately taking away kids' ability to communicate with each other. And so that kind of, I could list off hundreds of examples of those kinds of things that teachers still say to kids. And so we do have a lot of work to do and it isn't, you know, those are still minorities of teachers. They're not most of them. I think most teachers work really, really hard to be fair and to be, to be open and to be supportive of students of color, but not all, and we're not there yet. And so, again, I just say we, I think we've done a lot of neat work and I think we just need to keep doing it and we need to stay aware and we need to keep reading and keep thinking and keep paying attention. So thank you for listening to my sermon.
Appreciate it. You guys are preaching. I was, before the meeting started, before the live stream, I was asked, were we going to need breakout groups? And I was like, well, at the very end, there's an activity for breakout groups, but I have a feeling that these guys are going to be long-winded today. And yeah, we're right there. So, um, what I, which is fine, you know, process, do your thing. So I would really like to say, first, I want to echo, I think it was Norm who said, you guys are doing this work on camera and that adds a whole challenging dynamic to that and still pressing through and speaking your truth and doing all of this work. I really admire that. There are some conversations that I would love to have with some of you one-on-one, not on camera. And so if there's an opportunity for us to hang out now that we have shots in our arms, I would love to be able to do that on a one-to-one or one-to-two basis where we're not having to have these conversations only on camera and in these very structured ways. Because I think we all have stories that we need to share with one another. And that's a part of the real, a part of doing the real work. So I'm going to not respond to what you all had to say there because I want to try to push forward. But I think the quotes that I want to bring out from the text, there's on page 236 and 237, Glenn Singleton makes these two statements that I really want to make sure that we don't miss. So on 236, he says, "Racial achievement disparities cannot be eliminated without talking about race and specifically talking about the opportunities, access, and success gaps existing between white students and most students of color and Indigenous students." And so that quote there has really been the driver of every conversation that I've been trying to have with any stakeholders in this district since I got hired, is how do we learn how to have a conversation about race? And it's not to say that race is the only conversation that we need to have, but it is to say that if there are any racial disparities in this school district and we do not have the ability to engage in a conversation that is explicitly focused and centering race, then we will not be able to address those disparities effectively. The lesson here has not been, race is everything and it's the only conversation that we need to have. The lesson has been, race is something that we need to know how to talk about. And here are some tools for how to talk about race effectively. Condition one, focusing on the personal, local, and immediate, our stories. And I've heard you guys doing that today. Raymond was talking about his story and his history. Focusing on ourselves, that's important for us to be able to do that. If we can't talk about our racial journey and our racial story, we're not going to be effective in this work. Isolating race when it's time to isolate race. So if there's data that we need to talk about, we need to be able to isolate race so that we can see if there is a disparity. To me, one disparity would be if you're in a district where 80% of the kids are students of color, but only 20% of the teachers are teachers of color. That's a disparity to me. There's advantages to being, seeing people who look like you in leadership and in teaching roles. And so that's one disparity that we would want to be able to talk about and address. But if we can't see it and we can't isolate that, then we won't be able to engage in that. And then condition three is monitoring our agreements that we're talking, that monitoring the things that we're working on here. So that if we have agreed, we're making sure that we're following the prompts, making sure that we're following the agreements, making sure that we're holding all these things together. For that, we are, I'm putting myself on a pop quiz now. Oh, surfacing critical perspective, I think that actually should have been three. But that we're making sure that we are getting all of the voices at the table. And then condition five is, whoa, what is condition five? Somebody help me out.
Condition five is, what do you mean by race?
Oh, yeah. Making sure that we're clear on what we mean by race. And that's actually one of the things I would put it earlier if I wrote the book. And then condition six is recognizing the role of whiteness and the presence of whiteness and how it ends up impacting the dialogue that we have. And one of the ways it impacts the dialogue that we have is by saying, don't have this conversation at all, right? It, don't see race. One thing that Martin Luther King said, which I found very interesting, was when we were talking about desegregation, I'm getting an echo, I'm not sure if someone's still unmuted, but, you know, echo. But one of the things that Martin Luther King said when they were originally talking about desegregating the schools was that he didn't support desegregation of the schools. Martin Luther King was supportive of desegregation in all other areas, but he said in schools, it would be dangerous to have people who don't believe in the ability of certain kids trying to teach those kids. Last year, as an administrator and as a principal, I had a teacher who said to a group of kids, why can't you guys just do this the white way? I had a teacher who hit a kid over the head who was on his phone, only later to figure out that the kid was using his phone to translate the materials from class because he was new to the country, only had been here two months and couldn't understand what was going on. We didn't have systems for what to do with that. We had to work to unpack and have those, those teachers had some race work that needed to take place, but we hadn't had a system really to do that stuff. And there are probably principals who have story after story after story about these kind of things that are happening in our school systems. And those teachers are still teaching. We don't have a system that says, when you do that, you're out right away. We have to work with you and try to help you to get to the place where you can be successful. So these are critical conversations that we need to have. And the, but the other quote that Glenn Singleton put here on page 237 is, although it is transformative in and of itself, simply talking about race effectively is insufficient. And that's why I asked you, where do you go from here? So we're trying to get you some skills to be able to have a conversation about race. And just like any skill, it's only going to be with you to the degree that you practice it. If you're not practicing it other than the times that I'm with you, we're not going to, it's not going to get you very far. But we don't just stop at, let's talk about race and racism all the time. But now we have to go to, what does systemic school transformation look like? And so what I put in the chat was the current draft of the equity policy that's come from our students, our families, our staff in the system right now of what they see as needs of the system in terms of equity. And so I want to give you an opportunity to take a look at the draft. And I want to ask you, what do you see as their vision of what an equitable school system looks like? Are they talking only about, let's talk about race? Or are there other things in there that are showing up in terms of what the work should look like? Because I think that they are presenting a vision of where we should go from here. I'll give you maybe five minutes to read it and then just share reflections relative to this.
That was a very, very quick speed read on my part, but on the surface, I like what it has to say. I would have to take a slower read. I, I would have to take a slower read to nitpick anything, but I, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Yeah, and we don't wanna nitpick right now. We wanna just, this go way at the thirty thousand foot level. But what's the vision that the group of people who put this together, what's the, what's their vision of equity? Based on what you, what you saw there. And without reading a part of it, but just, what is kind of your sense?
Well, the senses that I have is that they're really interested in, uh, really looking at the effect that race and our attitudes and perceptions and behaviors around race are a critical part of that plan, but it also incorporates other issues that can cause inequities in our system. And it's looking at all aspects. It's looking at allocation of resources. It's looking at getting the right personnel in the right places. It's looking at training and ongoing, um, development of skills within our staff. And, um, so it's pretty comprehensive.
Oh, go ahead, Raymond.
No, go ahead, Ross.
I like the fact that it encompasses so many people, one, in the development of the policy, and two, in the enactment of the policy. It talks about, um, students and staff and communities and families. And, um, it, it, I love that thirty thousand foot level view that I'm reading in this policy draft. So, thank you, Marcus. It's a great piece of work.
And I would say, I really like how their, the, the policy's inclusive of all students. So we said, well, the policy says something about race, class, religion, culture, it doesn't have religion, citizenship, gender, ability. So, that's inclusive, inclusive of everybody in that every student, even those students, the focus will be on them every day. And that the ultimate thing is that every student in the Akamal School District will thrive and succeed. So I really like that piece, is that we're gonna do whatever we can, even, you know, look at our systems. I like the systems approach, looking at that and changing whatever we need to do, whether it's race or disparities, looking at all that and making sure that everybody thrives and succeeds.
I really like this statement. I thought it, um, does a really good job of hitting the, the key points. I like that we specifically called out staff and have a whole section on, on, on that. Um, I, I thought it was really comprehensive. And in fact, in, in, in reading it, it was really around kind of a more holistic approach to, uh, uh, equity and not, um, focused solely on, on race. It really talked about a whole bunch of different, um, aspects of, of, of equity. So, um, I, I thought it was well-written. I, I, you know, like, like Norm, it was a quick read, but I, I thought it was pretty comprehensive.
I did owe, um, Norm Graciela, uh, on that. It is on a thirty thousand foot level and it's all-inclusive. And it hits each point, race, inclusion, it, it, it involves everything. And the part of the teachers and administrators, it's all-important. That's a great job of a, a equity policy draft. I'm, I'm waiting for the, the final version. I know it's gonna be something that we will be able to achieve as a school board and as a school district. So, uh, my commendations to the community board and, uh, the students who came up with this.
I think we heard from everyone there, but I'd wanna push you back and say, when you read through that, what did you read that felt like, man, we are actively already doing this as a system? Or this is something that you think we're close to, um, is a strength of the Akamal School District related to what was described there in equity?
A couple of things. One is, we're having these conversations and we're having them across the district. I think that's part of it. Part of it is, it's a key part of the strategic plan. And I think that, um, you know, as long as that strategic plan isn't just a piece of paper on the wall, that it's in something that we're continually using to evaluate what we're doing and where we're going, that, that it, that it keeps it front and center. So I think those are two things. I don't think we're there yet. I think it's a start, but I think, uh, those are two things that have set us on the right path.
I agree. It is, it is part of the strategic plan. And we are doing it as a board, as well as the administrators, uh, the superintendent, deputy superintendents, principals, and it's in the crews. It's a good start, but there's more work to be done. If we speak to it and be pinpointing what is needed to be done, we can do it. I, uh, that's the two points, the two places I see with the board. When we get this racing and school administrators are, are digging into this, uh, equity policy and, and racial equity across the board and being inclusive.
I think something that we've been, we've made a lot of progress in is with the new superintendent, Superintendent Green, we do have a new, a different, um, even perhaps an improved style of leadership. And I, I think the critical race theory points out adaptive leadership as being one of the, or maybe Singleton, I kept, I think it may have been Singleton in chapter twelve, that adaptive leadership has to be part of the courageous conversations and critical race theory and so forth. So, you know, there's a lot of transparency. Uh, there's, I know that our superintendent is, is allowing people with, who want to, who have talent, ideas, getting feedback from people. You know, he's, he's doing a lot of that already. And that's laid, I think, the groundwork for what we're doing now. We've made great strides in that area as well.
So, Graciela, I'm not sure that I have a, a lot to add. I think I really agree with the fact that we know how, the fact that we included equity or component of equity in the strategic plan and that we've been talking about it for a couple of years at least. And we've slowly been making some edits to our board, uh, superintendent linkage policies to, um, even, even just simply include the word equity in existing policy, I think is a step in the right direction. Um, so I think we've, we've doing some things that are moving in a positive direction, but certainly still have a long ways to go.
I think one, one other thing we're doing well is the graduation rates for students of color, which are higher. There's no disparity there. So that's one area that we're doing, I think we're doing a good job in and, and an area that we've really focused on, so.
Okay. I think we're supposed to be done at four twenty. Am I right, Martha? Okay, so, um, I'm gonna make this slide. I'm gonna send it to Barb to circulate, um, in the next board doc so that you have it. And then, but the next prompt would be, where do you see us as being further apart? And one of the places where I would argue that we're the furthest apart is in having skills and being able to have the type of conversations that we need to have around race. We're doing it, but until we're in a place to where the leaders in our system are able to have these kind of conversations and facilitate these kind of conversations themselves with their staffs and their schools and to really do that work, it's not, because it can't be dependent on one black guy to run around to all the buildings and say, let's have a conversation about race, right? We need to have that be fostered within our leadership team. And I can tell you, if you met the kids who were working on this policy, they are so far beyond where the adults are in being able to have these conversations that I don't know that the adults can teach these kids. These kids are pushing. They're, uh, we, the, my work on this has been watering it down because the kids are so far ahead of where the adults are in the system. And it's like, if you say it that way, it's just gonna go, we gotta, and so this has actually been a lot of coming back to try to help the kids to be closer to where the adults in our system really are. And so, we have this work to do. And I appreciate all the feedback that you gave about this. And we're meeting with various constituent groups. We met with the Native Ed parents today. We're gonna meet with the migrant Ed parents on Thursday, I believe, this week. We have meetings with bargaining groups. We're gonna be collecting a lot of feedback on this. But I think the vision here is comprehensive. It is much bigger than just a focus on race. The message is not, you know, we are all tied down because of race or racism, but the message is there are things in the system that we can do to remove barriers so that everyone has a more, um, equal opportunity. And, um, I'm really excited about this work. And like I said earlier, I would really like to have some one-to-one time with each of you, uh, so that we can go into that. I know that we had talked about doing that, with a couple of you previously, but I would really like to have that time with all of you. So Superintendent Green, if you can help to, um, make that happen. Because I think there are, you know, we just need to get to know each other a little bit deeper. I wanna say the last thing. Siri thinks I was telling it to do something. Um, the last thing, uh, that term, critical race theory, it's a term that we probably should unpack at some point. I've never used it in any of the sessions that we have had because it is so, been so politicized. And it's, so it just comes in with people kind of digging in. What I would say is, the idea that race impacts us in ways that we are conscious of and sometimes unconscious of, I think that's a reality that I've heard all of you articulate on one level or another. And that's what it really is, is examining how is race playing out in all of these different ways. But I try to avoid the term because I'm trying to bring allies on to say, let's have a, let's have a conversation in the way that this topic has been portrayed over the last couple of years in our media has made it hard for us to be able to undo that. But we do need to understand the role of race. We do need to engage in ethnic studies where kids should be able to see themselves in the curriculum of a school. They should learn their history. They should be able to surface their perspectives. And I think that's really what that word, that phrase is, means to me. But it's been so politicized. It's just something that I try to avoid all, all the other, because I just.
Dr. Pitt, excuse me, what, what term is that? I think I had to turn up my earphone, so.
Oh, that term, critical race theory, I just think it's become such a, you know, wedge to where it's like, when you hear it, you think, it, it has, people have an image of what that means, even though it's never been unpacked what that, what that means for them most of the time. And so I try to avoid that particular phrase. And I just say, we wanna be skilled in understanding how race is showing up in ways that we, you know, may not be conscious of. And, um, stay there. And then, I think if we spend some time and unpack what that, what that term means, um, we may have a different view, but I think, you know, it's been so politicized. And I think, Raymond, you're absolutely right, that we have to figure out how we work together in this. And language is such a powerful way that we have, you know, that it can be used both to divide and to bring together. So, um, I thank you guys for this time. It's, I'm a minute over. And I do not have the assignment ready for next month. We will probably be looking, um, at this policy more in-depth and try to understand what's going on in there. So I'll make sure that you get it after it has been reviewed by the community, um, groups. I just think it's important that our community has had all the say on it before, the board takes it and runs with it. So, um, this is not a final version, but I do agree that it is a good start. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Marcus. Um, we are going to take a break for a few minutes until probably, well, we'll start at four thirty. Thank you for, for joining all, us all here today. This is the board's, um, meeting of April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'm wondering what happened to the year. We're like closing in on graduation in about two seconds. So, we have, um, Adams Elementary Leadership and, um, a special guest to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance today. Mr. Kapliki, is it you or Senor Contreras that is introducing our special guest?
I'll be introducing our special guest. And, um, she is a special guest. She is a, I would call a lifer here at Adams. She did go to Epic, uh, somewhere else, but, um, all the other grades she's been here and, and, um, I would say she's enjoying it. Um, she shows up smiley every day and, um, is doing awesome things. And Mrs. Means is class. And so, yeah, here for us to do our Pledge of Allegiance is Bailey Montalvez.
Anderson, could you present the flag, please? And Bailey, you can start whenever you're ready after the flag is on the screen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bailey, that was perfect. Absolutely perfect. A plus for you on that pledge.
I have to give her a shout out too, as her teacher, because she was really super worried about the word indivisible today. She told me that she was really worried. And so I just told her to practice and she did a great job. Thanks. It was awesome.
That is, that, that is a hard word, even for adults, Bailey. So you showed up a lot of adults that I know. Can you tell, can you, um, Senor Contreras or Stephanie, tell us a little bit about Bailey?
I can tell you what I, what I know from just being her teacher in person and all year online. She's always been a very bubbly, excited to learn, awesome student. Her mom is also a teacher, not in the Yakon District, but she did her student teaching here at, her mom did her student teaching at Adams. And so she has a mom that's a teacher. Her sister, her older sister, was also a fourth grade student in my class a long time ago. She's at Davis now. So, we're keeping it in the family. And I think she, I, I don't know. I'd have to ask Bailey. I think she really likes school. She shows that she does. She was really excited that I asked her to do this.
I love school and I love to learn a lot.
You have a lot of learning ahead of you, Bailey. So it's good that you like that. You're in fourth grade?
Yes, I am in fourth grade.
Nice. So you get to be the big, the big group in school next year, huh? The big kids. Nice. I'm gonna let the, the rest of the board members, um, tell you thank you for being here. And they may have a question or two for you, okay? So, Graciela.
Hi Bailey, my name is Graciela. Thank you for being here. You did a really good job on the Pledge of Allegiance. And I agree, the word indivisible is really hard. There's lots of letters and sounds in there that are hard. What, what is one thing that you like most about your school, Adams? What was that?
Recess.
Recess is fun. I agree. Well, thank you for being here, Bailey. You did a really good job.
Thank you.
Raymond?
Hi Bailey, my name is Raymond. Nice to meet you. Thank you for being with us today and thank you for your leadership. I know it takes courage to, to come on to a board meeting and Zoom meeting to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And that word indivisible, I really like that word, right? We're, we're all one, we're all united and there's nothing that could break us apart. So that's, that's awesome. So, I just have one question is, what is your, what are your plans or your goals after we graduate high school?
Be like my mom, a teacher.
Wow, that's nice. You're gonna come back to Akamal School District and teach, right? Good, good. I mean, we're gonna hold you to that. So, I also wanna thank, uh, Mr. Contreras for your leadership as well with the work you're doing. Um, and Mr. Kapliki as well. I know you're working from afar. And of course, my fellow Wapato Wolf, Mr. Alvarado as well. And of course, my fellow Wapato Wolf, Mr. Alvarado as well. Want to thank him for his work and his leadership and Adams Elementary. Good job, guys, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor Davis.
Hi Bailey, it was so good to see you doing that pledge of allegiance. And uh, I'm excited about you wanting to be a school teacher and coming back to Yakima School District to teach. Maybe convince your mother to come back. But I I also want to thank uh Jose and Doug and my good friend Lorenzo for filling in for Doug in doing a great work over at Adams. That's one of the schools that my church adopts. And uh, it's good to see you doing a great job, Bailey. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And finally, Norm.
Hi Bailey, thanks for joining us today. I've got a couple of questions for you. I'm a person that loves to read and I love music. So I'm curious, who is your favorite musician and what's a good book you read this year?
A good book that I mostly read this year is um Judy Moody. I like it. I read one of the books. And my favorite singer is mostly um uh.
I don't know, it's hard to pick a favorite sometimes, isn't it?
Uh-huh. Yeah, it's kind of hard because I like a lot of people, you know, like them, I like their songs.
What's what style of music do you like the best?
Hip-hop mostly.
You like pop? Okay. Does that make you a Beyonce fan or a Rihanna fan or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, keep enjoying and keep listening and keep reading.
Thank you.
Bailey, I want to again, thank you for joining us. Um, we have been very lucky to have you with us today. And thanks, thanks to your family for giving you this time with us.
Mm-hmm.
And thank you, Stephanie, for being here for your student. We very much appreciate that. We don't we don't always see the teachers here. We often do, but not always. Um, and it's a special treat when we can have the classroom teacher here with their student. So Bailey, I'm gonna let you go. If you want to go, you're welcome to stay. But if you have other things to do, um, we completely understand and um will not be offended if you choose to leave, okay?
Thank you for having me.
Honey, it was our pleasure. Thank you so much for being here.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Well, that was fun. It's always a treat to have the kids here. Um, next on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. We have been doing this for um this is the sixth meeting, so maybe a month and a half we've been doing this. The board has um chosen to share the responsibility for reading a land acknowledgement at the beginning of every meeting and um so I'm starting the the rotation again with today's land acknowledgement. This is a document that we have coordinated with um the Yakima Nation and um, it is my pleasure to be able to read this today. Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral lands of the fourteen Confederate tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than twelve million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalane, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kititas, Clickitat, and Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native peoples who are tied to the land through history, legends, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. An acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect and a step toward correcting the stories and practices that erase indigenous peoples' history and culture. It also honors the truth. As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation. So that concludes the land acknowledgement. Um, next item on the agenda is a school presentation. It's always fun to be able to um have individual buildings present to us. And one thing that I know I have missed greatly is being able to um visit the schools during these meetings every month. So maybe next year, cross our fingers. So I'm gonna turn this over to Senor Contreras.
Hi guys, thank you. I'm gonna present here my screen. Let's hope uh everything goes according to plan, right? Um, you know, uh, thank you guys so much. Thank you Superintendent Green for allowing us to come and share with everybody here in the school board um and everybody else in attendance as well to share with you guys what we've been doing here at Adams. Um, oftentimes Doug and I chat and and now Lorenzo, we're like, what are we doing? And we're just kind of doing different things and trying to get things moving and and um we've just enjoyed our time here. I think I mentioned it to somebody. Um, you know, I'm having a lot of fun and they're like, hey, that's great, but fun isn't part of your evaluation. And so um, get back, you know, and so it was fun to hear that. Um, but also just uh know that we are enjoying our time here. Um, it is uh, it isn't always easy, but it is a lot of fun as well. And and I think we're making good way. And I think in our presentation here today, um, we hope you see that. And so I do want to say, you know, for those of you who are not aware, um, Doug has been out for a couple of months almost not home with some uh COVID-related health issues. And so in his absence, Mr. Lorenzo Alvarado has stepped in and supported um as acting principal and and that has been a huge help. And I'll mention in in the presentation, but we're one of the biggest elementary schools here and our population is huge. And and so it's just important to have that support and and thank you for everybody that that helped coordinate that as well. And we were able to provide that support for our students, our staff and community as a whole. And so I'm really excited to be here. Um, I am a, I'll let you guys know now, I am a fidgeter and I play with my hands a lot. And so I'll try to control them as much as I can, but um, you'll start seeing um doing magic tricks here soon. And so I just want to let you guys know uh ahead of time. Um, but yeah, again, we're really excited and um with that, we'll get started with our presentation here. So Adams Elementary, um, this is our mission statement. One thing that we want to let people know is that we don't only have a mission statement, but Adams as a team, we feel like we are on a mission to support and engage all of our students. And I think there's a sense of urgency in that, not just having a mission statement, but but feeling like we are on a mission and now we did as it's right here, it says Adams Elementary is a family who maximizes potential to inspire excellence in our community. We cultivate relationships and school pride. We maintain steadfast systems and focus on growth for all Bulldogs. And I think that is one of the things that we um Doug and I and Lorenzo now have really enjoyed is seeing the staff come together to support our students. And so um again, there's that sense of urgency. Uh, we oftentimes and and it was said before we got here that uh there is a uh sense of family, the Adams family. And we joke a lot and we hum the song from the cartoon or the TV show, depending on when you watched it. And in doing that, you know, we really started to feel as a family and and the things that we do for our community is very important. So again, our vision here is our Adams family provides a safe and supportive environment that fosters a positive growth mindset and promotes success, student success, helps those in need and builds sustainable relationships. And I think that last word there will carry on to the rest of our presentation as we focus on relationships. Relationships have been huge. Um, and and I'll we'll look at that as we go through the presentation. One of the things that we wanted to do again, moving forward and looking at our work here is to focus it based on our district's compass. And there was a lot of people that spent a lot of time and energy and and shared ideas in creating this compass. And this compass has five great goals that really outline a great plan for our students moving forward. And we're excited to align our plan at Adams with that. Before we were able to do that, we had to take a step back and figure out where we were at. Um, we are the uh fifth set of principals here at uh or fourth or fifth set of principals here at Adams. And and we wanted to really build a great foundation. And we felt that with the goals, there was pillars that were assigned to them. The four pillars at the very top of that, it says our four pillars are the building blocks for accomplishing our goals for student success. And that for Doug and I really resonated in our work that we did in July and August as well, is that there is, we need to establish a firm foundation where these goals are going to be able to build these goals. And so we took a step back from the goals, not ignoring them, but took a step back and and started to focus on our pillars. Again, we wanted to have firm foundation block for our pillars to be built upon um for the rest of our goals. And so pillar one, teaching and learning. Pillar two, we're in this together. Pillar three, investing in people. And pillar four, bringing the pieces together. And as we reflected, again, we started to figure out where are we at now and where do we want to go? And then in that process, we realized that again, these pillars were crucial. Um, and two of them stood out to us, um, three of them really, but we focused on two and our plan as we go on next year to focus on the other two. But that is where our focus has been uh the last month. And so as we, or this last year, as we look at the work that we've done from July first, even before then in June, all the way to now, it is definitely around pillars um two and three. So this is a climate survey, the CE survey that is done um throughout the year, once, once, a couple of times a year. And the red and orange areas, this was done in two thousand and nineteen, uh red and orange areas are areas of growth. So when we started to look at this, we looked at them specifically, the top five and bottom five and started to figure out areas that we can really focus and grow. Several of them are here and and I think if you look at our post data, we were able to see that uh some of those, we were able to make great gains and a lot of them were able to make great gains. And so we were really excited. So we looked at this and we started to figure out what do we need to do? Where do we need to focus our attention? What do we need to work on? And and the biggest thing was again, a couple of pillars. Um, pillar two, which was we're in this together, and pillar three, investing in people. And we started doing that. We started the very first thing, the, an easy way for us to get um out in front of people was doing uh uh the meal distribution. We were out here doing meal distribution every Wednesday in the mornings and evenings, introducing ourselves to people, uh making sure people know, knew who we were. Uh, we had a lot of questions here, you guys and the principals were like, yeah, that's us. We're the new, you know, principals and and being excited for that for our community. Um, you see as a picture of uh Mr. Don Davis here coming out and and saying hi to us as well, but just supporting the community in the meal distribution as well. I will talk about this throughout this presentation, but partnerships has been huge and we built a lot of partnerships uh within our community. One of those started from us being at the lunch line. There was a lady that came through. Uh, her name was Maria and she said, hey, I work at KFC. Uh, the manager asked if I was able to support somebody locally. They want to donate to a school. I said, my students go to Adams, can we donate for them? And we partnered with them. We were able to get our staff as a thank you and and just show some appreciation. I invest in them as well, uh and in their tummies, which is always important. Um, invest in them and say, hey, we have a meal for you. Thank you so much for all the things that you were doing. And that was just one, again, of many partnerships that I'll share with you guys. Another one, Mrs. Means, um, I think she's gone and and I didn't tell her this, but I was, I'm gonna talk about her quite a bit or or some here in this um presentation, only because she was one of the first staff members we met. We were, Doug and I were walking around the building and she came back and she had just came back from uh doing a home visit, making sure they had books and other things at home, food as well. And it was just so neat to see um the dedication she has and has had throughout the whole time. Doug partnered with one of his uh friends uh and colleagues out in Seattle and we were able to get a signed Seahawks football for Miss Means. She's a huge fan. And so that was fun to see. Uh, we shared that with them um and their students and their students were pretty excited too. And so again, one of many things that we're doing to let the staff know that we're in this together and we're investing in our staff who in turn invest in our students and the community. Again, here's a picture of Doug uh putting some food in the back of someone's uh car. I wasn't in these because I was taking the pictures, but um I'll try to get Doug to take pictures of me next time. So um, another one of the things that we did, a really big thing that we did was a book study. And I think um Doug brought this into our staff and and we had a forty staff members working on this book study, some in the morning, some in the afternoon, but it really allowed for us to have great discussions um and sharing of our thoughts and our perspectives on these three shifts, relationships, leadership, and partnerships. And I would say Doug and I have worked on and with the staff have worked on relationships, but partnerships have been just closely knit with that as well, along with strong leadership. And so this book study really allowed for that. I think crucial conversations to happen with our staff to get us moving forward in the right direction, all being on board. Um, and I think that has been a good building block and one of the strategies I would say that we've used to to establish that foundation as we build our pillars and then um focus on achieving all of the goals that we have. So we started doing all of these different things. We we've enjoyed, again, the work. Um, this is a survey, the survey results. So I'll go back one. Here's the the survey results two thousand and nineteen. Um, and here's a survey two thousand and twenty in the fall. Um, huge, uh, I would say huge gains and and I'm biased of obviously because I am the assistant principal here, but biased. And I think this is um really great um data to show some of the growth that we've had in our staff, the perception data. We had the highest number of parents involved as well in this in this survey more than um the last several years. And so it was fun to see um the engagement that we're already seeing uh from the the, I would say, small fruits of our labor so far, that the parents are engaged, the students are engaged. And as a staff, we're engaged in 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 working on things to make us as a staff more effective to impact the lives of students. And so um we've enjoyed seeing that. A little bit about Adams. Um, if you don't know, we're six hundred and ninety-six students according to OSPI, uh which does not include uh preschool classes, which we have three of them, which is about fifty-four students. Our demographic is ninety-five point five percent Hispanic, three point six percent white, point four percent American Indian, um point three biracial, multiracial, and then point one African-American. Um, and so huge population, Hispanic-wise, we have a huge population here um that we're working on providing equity for, but also providing acceptance and and just that um welcoming, that welcoming feeling um in our campus. And so we're excited to to implement different things on our campus to do that. A few more numbers. I know sometimes people like numbers, but we have a few more numbers. English language learners, sixty-one percent almost that are that. Uh, low income, ninety-one percent, migrant, sixteen percent. And I believe I'm not wrong, um, Chumigini said this is one of the higher ones in the district. Um, and again, students with disabilities is almost twenty percent. So being the largest elementary school, when you convert percentages into numbers, it's just an overwhelming amount of numbers um of our students. So many of our students are in some of these categories, if not multiple categories. And so um we're working uh on making sure that we are providing an equitable learning environment for all of our students. And in doing that, there's a lot of work to be done. And and um one of the things, a couple of things that we are doing, either doing currently or getting ready to implement for the following school year are these four areas. We believe um, we are a school of focus. And so we're working with some ISS, OSSI funding, but also some support there uh to improve academically with our students. Part of that is we're looking at improvement science framework and doing some studying there. Between those two activities there, those two programs, we're looking at twelve to eighteen hours that our staff are committing outside of their regular instruction time. And so it's a huge lift, a huge commitment time for our our staff members. But again, I think Doug and I and now Lorenzo are establishing a good, strong core um foundation, these pillars, so that we can lift this load together. I think we've seen our staff um not just one group, but kind of spread out to our staff. Everybody's willing to help and support in all these different areas. And so it's been fun for us to see that it's not just Doug and I and Lorenzo, but as a staff, we're coming together and really figuring out ways to better meet the needs of those students. Another one that we're implementing for the following school year, which I would say I'm the most excited about maybe, um, and I'll tell you guys a little bit why, but I'm the most excited about is dual language. Um, huge commitment um from our staff. We're so excited about it. Um, we're so excited that four of our first grade teachers are. Um, we're so excited that four of our first grade teachers are wanting to teach it, but we're only doing two strands. And so we're trying to figure out, um, who's rock paper scissors or flipping a coin on deciding who's teaching in those classes. And so it's a good problem to have. No, nobody else can have those teachers. They're great. And we want to figure out how to incorporate them in our dual language here. So another one of those is twenty-first century. Um, we're excited to be able to start that in the summer as well. And so again, there's other schools that are doing these, um, different programs and, and implementing these or, or working on some of this. Um, we're the only school doing all four of them. And so again, it's a huge lift for our campus, for our staff. And, um, we've enjoyed seeing the commitment, um, from the staff in, in doing all of these different, um, programs. So one of the very first days that Doug and I, actually the, the very first day Doug and I met, I met him out here up front. He walked up, he walked out of the door. I'm walking in and I'm like, hey, how's it going Doug? And he's like, good. And the first thing he says is, hey dude, you're shorter than I thought you were. And I was like, hey, thanks. You're taller than I thought you were. I don't know. And we started walking around, you know, kind of joked a little bit, came into our offices and kind of talked a little bit about family and who we were and where we're coming from. And, and then Doug was like, hey, you want to go for a walk? And I was like, yeah, I'll, I'll go for a walk. Yeah, that's fine. So we go outside, we're walking around. And Doug is asking, he's like, hey, what do you see? What do you see? And being new, and this is my first, you know, job as a, as a assistant principal, I'm, I'm trying to answer his question like thoughtfully, but I don't know what he's trying to get at. And he's like, what do you see? What, what do you notice? I'm like, well, there's our building and you know, the, the roof's a little faded, but you know, it's a good building and there's some toys. And so we got a new toy set and some bark and he's like, yeah, but wh- what else do you see? And I'm getting nervous now. So I'm like, I don't, I don't know. I don't see anything else. This is kind of, this wrath of school. There's nothing else really to see. And he's like, think about this, you're, you're a family that lives here. We have ninety-five percent of our families are Hispanic. They come to school. What's, what's inviting them? What's letting them know like they're welcomed here? And I'm looking around and it's like English sign, English sign, English sign, English. I'm like, well, I guess nothing. There's nothing. He's like, dude, we gotta figure that out. Like we need to, as soon as people are driving by, people are walking up, we need to let them know that this is a place that they are welcome. And one of the big things that we started to do as far as our community connection, which is really focused on that third pillar, investing in people. And we don't think of people just our staff. We think of people as a community, people as our students. Um, and so one of the things we started doing is anytime that we, well, we started to get new signs, right? We got a new Adams Elementary sign, um, escolapi Maria, the Adams. We got that up there and that was a lot of fun. We got a lot of good feedback from the community. They were excited that that was in, um, Spanish. We also got some window decals, again, in Spanish. Any signs that we do inside, we're making sure that they are in Spanish, just to make sure that when people come into our building or they're on the outside, they feel welcome, they don't feel lost. Um, and I, and we think that is something new for our community to have that hasn't had before. And so, um, here at Adams, we also have these door hangers that, um, I like to take credit for, but I think we stole the idea from somebody else. But all good teachers do that. And, um, we took this idea and again, made these door holders. So when we were going to do our home visits, which we did, I don't know how many, um, Doug might have a better number. We did so many home visits over the summer, um, trying to get, connect to families, not just introduce ourselves, but get them resources, um, that we were trying to share with them, whether they were books, um, for literacy, whether it was food, uh, or other things, we were trying to make that connection. And so we wanted to make sure that they knew that we showed up and we weren't just two random guys knocking on people's doors because nobody knew us. We were new principals to the building and how do they know just two guys showing up? And so we thought this was a neat way to kind of get that message out like, hey, those guys have showed up. They were the principals, nothing to worry about. Um, one of the things that we also saw while we were walking around is, um, and unfortunately it was a lot of, uh, broken windows. And I think on the bottom left there, you can see some of those windows. Again, Doug and I a- asked ourselves, what message is that sending to the community? Do we really value education enough to make sure that the things are taken care of, so that our students come to school in a safe environment, glasses not on the floor, those kinds of things. And I gotta tell you guys, we got ahold of Manuel Orozco. He's our new maintenance director. He has been awesome. He had these things switched and done. I mean, within a week or two, it was just neat to see his commitment to our students and, and just saying, hey, you know, we gotta make sure that we're, we're doing this better for the community, you know? Um, and again, he had that same desire to make sure that the community felt, um, what we were doing at school was great and it was a safe place for them to come and join. And so as we move forward, we're wanting to make sure that all of our signs, the signage, anything that we send home, um, is in English and Spanish. Um, any other language that become a part of our community here, but, uh, for right now, those have been the two that we've seen. We have a big project that we'd like to do in the gym, converting that a little bit and making it a little bit more inviting once we were able to do assemblies. And so that's something, again, ideas that we have moving forward and trying to get community, um, buy-in for that as well. So one of those many projects that I talked about was, uh, the, during the summer visits was our books. Uh, we delivered over five thousand books to our community here. Not all Adams students, but many of the Adams students. It started out as a program with one teacher was giving out books. She wanted to make sure that her students had books and that they each had three books, something to read throughout the summer. And so she got her twenty-six students, three books, and that was in June of twenty twenty. Doug and I got hired. We heard about that. We thought it was great, um, in connecting with, uh, Grace of Christ Church with J Cup and Pastor Alex. And we believed though we were able to continue to gather books for our students. By July, the end of July, we had eighty-eight families, uh, or eighty-eight students that had received books. By the end of November, we kept doing it until it got a little chilly, but by the end of November, now we were at five hundred and sixty of our students had received a book. Um, now if you do the math, you're like, hey, that doesn't quite add up. What's going on? Uh, the reason why it doesn't add up because that's five hundred of, five hundred and sixty of our students. Um, but as we would go out to the community, we would see daycares. We would see, uh, neighborhood kids that maybe went to MLK or Barge or Garfield or other places. And we knew that they were just as interested and probably just as needy to have some of these resources. So we started to give out any kids that we saw, we'd throw an extra and we'd go and deliver them to them. And so that is one of the partnerships I think we were excited about in, in the daycares and, uh, some of those families to be able to leverage that. And, and, uh, I'll mention that as well here in a little bit, but, um, just a neat opportunity for us to connect again with the community. Um, listen to what they were needing and try to become kind of a resource manager for those people. Some people were like, we need some things and we would go and reach out, whether it was Mi Poblitto or Grace of Christ or Stone Church or, um, other community, uh, Life Gate, uh, or other just family members that we know. It was fun to make those connections. So we're really excited, um, that we were able to do that, um, right from the get-go and we've continued to do that. Another one of our partnerships, again, looking at those two pillars and feel like we're in this together and supporting our community is something that I would say is pretty profound in the Hispanic community, uh, soccer, football, uh, is something that is common amongst, uh, many communities. We are privileged and, and honored to be one of a hundred of these, um, to be a campus that has one of a hundred of these in the U S. Um, U S youth soccer and Target are partnering to provide and make, um, more of these all the time, um, in different communities. And we, uh, are again, one of a hundred of them in the U S to be able to have one of these. I will tell you guys, before the white nets, you can see them a little bit, but before those white, um, goalposts were put in, kids were already playing. Uh, the fence was up, it was colored, it was painted. Kids were already playing, having a blast, enjoying their time, um, with something new in our community. It was a safe place. Again, um, schools should be safe all the time. And this is a place where kids started showing up, playing soccer. Pastor Don Davis and also, uh, Superintendent Green came by one day and they were, they saw the kids out there playing. And it was really funny to me because one little guy was taking the soccer ball, dribbling, dribbling, kicked it in from the side. It made a, made it through on the side, not through the front, but through the side. And he was just as excited as he would have made it through the front. He just was yelling goal and cheering and running around and, um, uh, it was just fun to see. Again, from day one before the goalposts went there, kids have been using it. Um, our students love it at recess. Um, I was out there the other day blocking goals from the fourth graders, but they could only shoot from the middle. I was a little scared if they got a little bit closer. And so they were able to shoot it from the middle and, and that was it. So, um, again, we're really excited for this. In the fall, we're hoping to have soccer for, for success, which will, um, it'll be between fifty and sixty students that will come and learn, um, good health habits, um, and enjoy playing soccer as well and learn the sport if they have it. And so it's just fun to see that, the honor that we have to have one of these in our community here. Again, one of the big things that we focused on is partnerships, partnerships, leadership, relationships and getting out in the community, partnering with people, um, to provide unique opportunities or unique things for our students. And, um, two of these that were very close to each other were, um, Project Five Hundred and, um, The Giving Tree. Project Five Hundred happened first and so, uh, normally what they do is they go and partner up. So a donor and a student will go and shopping together, provide, uh, I think it's seventy-five dollars. They'll go shopping together, getting clothes and what they need. Um, because of COVID, they weren't able to do that. And so there was a big, I don't want to say disconnect, but there was sadness amongst the volunteers that they weren't able to do that because it's a huge joy that you see in the kids' face as you partner with them and you're going with them, shopping, even though it's early in the morning. Um, you're able to go and shop and get things for them. And so one of the things that, uh, we did, we did it a little bit different, but we were still able to provide, um, warm clothing and gifts for two hundred and fifty students. I cannot read off all of the partners. It was over forty or forty-five people, uh, companies and groups of people that were supporting, uh, this effort. Um, there's a picture of some of those there, but Triumph, uh, Group, I would say was one of the big partners and helping organize all of it. Um, I don't have the, I would like to tell you guys more about Katie McGee. She's one of our S L Ps here, uh, speech language pathologist, but her family is very involved and has been doing that Project Five Hundred here at Adams since it started. Whenever you guys come and visit, please come find Miss Katie McGee. Ask her, what is your connection and your family's connection to Project Five Hundred? Because their involvement and dedication to it has been so neat and, uh, it was so fun to hear their story, um, about that. And so I ask you guys, when you guys come and visit, please stop by and look for Miss Katie McGee and ask her that. Um, a couple of weeks later or, or close to a month later, we did another one with Mi Poblitto, which is called The Giving Tree. Um, and again, over two hundred and fifty families received holiday gifts. The generosity, um, of our faith-based partner to provide gifts in a year that has been so hard for so many, uh, was so moving and so touching. Um, you know, COVID has been one of those years where the COVID year, this last school year, um, I think, somebody mentioned earlier, but you know, what did the year go? You know, there was a lot of loss for people. There was a lot of job loss, families, uh, many different things that made the year really hard. Um, but to see the generosity, um, in two different projects like this, to be able to provide, um, something for, you know, more than half of our students, um, was just so neat. And so, um, again, touching, um, and again, it goes back to our pillars that we're focusing on, which is we're in this together and invest in people. And I think both of these programs and projects really help support that. So. So one of those seeds that I mentioned earlier was going out to the community and sharing those books. Now in those books, giving those books to the daycares, we were able to connect with them. Um, Doug and I did this really crazy, crazy thing and we gave out our cell phone numbers to everybody. And, uh, when Doug first did it, I was like, yeah, dude, that's pretty cool. You do that. And then I'm like, well, if you're doing it, I gotta do it too. And so I started giving out my cell phone number to people. And at first I was pretty nervous about it. And I was like, man, my wife is going to be calling me, who's calling me all these times and what's going on? And really it became something, people were calling and asking about specific things, um, when school started, um, things on computer stuff. I was able to talk to people on computer tech issues, um, just so many different things. And it was so neat to be able to support the community that way. Um, and, uh, one of those was through our daycares. And so we're hoping, I think, moving forward is to leverage that and be able to, again, the seeds that we planted and providing them books, we want to better support our students when they come into kindergarten. So how can we support these daycares to provide them with their resources, training, so that their daycares, um, maybe are a little bit more focused on academics. So when they come to school, they know their alphabet, they know some numbers, they know how to count a little bit. And one of the things that we've seen in our, in our data is kinder readiness. And that is one thing that we want to address and we think, um, in our minds, we have a, uh, golden ticket in, in the connection that we started with our daycares and being able to reach out to them and support them in this way. Again, we have a huge migrant population. Um, again, ninety-five percent of our students are coming in, um, from the Hispanic community, but a lot of them, the majority of those are bilingual. And so how do we support them? Um, again, one of many partnerships is Trillium. Trillium, they are in charge of, or they, they do a lot of the housing here. Um, and one of the things that they've done with us is, is they've supported us in, in books. Um, there, I mean, I, so many different things, uh, Project Five Hundred was one of them. Um, so many different things that Trillium has supported us in. And one of the most recent ones is, is buying some books for our first and second graders that we're hoping to give out. They're bilingual books, but we're hoping to give it out to our first and second graders again, to continue that, uh, early literacy skill. And so we're really excited for those. Being empowered, connected, supported, resilient and engaged is what we want for our students. Um, again, one of those goals and, uh, one way that we found to do that for our students is in providing them, again, partnering with Rotary and the Rotary Club of Yakima, and providing these desks for students. And, um, if you go online, there's a lot of different stories about people providing desks for students. This one I would say is, is very touching to me. As a child, um, I was in third and fourth grade and my mother bought me a desk. Actually, she didn't buy it for me. It was donated. They were going to trash it and she saved it. She salvaged it, um, and brought it to our house. And she said, Miko, this is your desk. When you're sitting here, I know that you're working on studying, you're working on paying attention for your schooling. I am not going to ask you to do any chores. I'm not going to ask you to do anything with your little brothers. I'm the oldest of five. If you're sitting here, I know that you are focused on your education and I want you to do that because I want you to one day graduate. I use that desk for studying, but I also use it to get out of a lot of, uh, homework and a lot of, or not homework, a lot of chores, um, and things that I didn't want to do, going to places that I didn't want to go to. Man, I'm studying, mom, I can't, I can't. And so, uh, but in doing that, the combination of having that desk, my own place at my house that I can go and study at was really important, you know? Um, many of you, uh, and myself included, are, we're sitting behind a desk right now. Or maybe it's a makeshift desk like Mr. Pimpleton outside. So that's, that's kind of nice. But we are, we are sitting behind a desk or we have a desk at work or we work from a desk. And, and it's, a desk is something important for someone that's working hard, has goals and is, is accomplishing different things. And, and again, for me to have a desk at third or fourth grade, nine or 10 years old, and have good teachers, a combination of my own space at home and good teachers, really has made a huge impact on me. Um, and I've seen that in my life and I get so excited to be able to provide, again, the, the initial goal was one hundred desks. Um, and that's what we asked for. Uh, Rotary, depending, they changed the materials around on what they were going to do. And instead of just saying, hey, we're going to do the one hundred desks, they were able to double the amount of desks for our students. So now it's two hundred desks and now it's not just third grade, now it's second grade. And again, the combination of a desk, supportive, awesome teachers, made a huge impact on me. I could only imagine, I could only imagine what two hundred desks and a hundred staff members at Adams, what the impact will have, um, on the community here. And, and I think that to me is, is again, long-term goals and looking, um, to the future and making a, an impact that's going to be beyond just a year, beyond just their time in Adams, but setting them up for success, whatever that may be after, um, college. Again, it's after high school and beyond. And so that's one of the things that I'm really excited about. If you would like to come and see some of these students, we deliver to our second graders this Friday from one to two, we'll be delivering those to our second graders. Um, and I say delivering, but we're not going to be delivering, they're going to come and pick those up. Um, some families do, did ask to have them delivered and we're working on that, but the majority of them are going to be picking them up on Friday between one and two. So you're all invited to come and see those students, uh, receive their desks. One of the goals that we have as, as a district is bilingual, bilingual, by education, by graduation, um, through education. Our team has done, again, the, the, the people that are in this dual language team have done so much to get ready for this. Um, I gotta give a huge shout out to Dr. Darling. Um, our team, when they go to trainings, um, and they go to PDs where Dr. Darling is presenting at, uh, whether it, for whatever dual language, they come back and they're more excited than ever to really begin to implement those pieces, implement dual language in our school. Again, we have, I would say a good, uh, issue. I don't want to call it an issue, but it's a good problem to have. But we have four first grade teachers that want to see the value in it and want to teach it. Unfortunately, we're only looking at two spots here. Again, don't share that with any other school because I don't want them taking our good staff members. But we have an abundance of people in K one, two, that are very interested in providing, um, this, uh, for our students. And so we see the value in it. Our staff are involved in Akosetcha, AD T L E. Imagine Learning is one of our local programs here that we're, we're using to, to support those students. Um, again, different GLAD strategies, enhance core reading instruction or equity, um, Spanish classes. Some people have enrolled in Spanish classes. And so again, we're currently in early exit building, but we're transitioning to a, uh, one-way dual language in the fall. But we'll have two strands. Preschool will have two classes and kindergarten will have two classes. And then we'll continue adding a grade. We'll have two strands. Preschool will have two classes and kindergarten will have two classes. And then we'll continue adding a grade and two classes every year. By 2026, all of our students pre-K to fifth grade should have access to a dual language program if they choose at Adams Elementary. And we are ecstatic about that and, and so excited to be able to provide that for our students. Again, we're, we are viewing our students and what they're coming in with their Spanish as an asset as opposed to a hindrance in their education. One of the main reasons why I feel very connected to this is because I was a student that started in Yakima School District and in Spanish-only class. First grade, kindergarten, first grade was Spanish-only. By second grade, I had transitioned to English. But I gotta tell you, my, my transition, second, third, fourth and fifth, by fifth grade, I didn't transition to English. I had only learned English and lost my Spanish. And that Spanish wasn't cultivated. And I gotta tell you guys that that was hard to figure out what to do then. And for me, the wake-up moment was when I couldn't go and speak to my grandmother. Okay, we hung out with my grandmother a lot. But I had lost so much. Nobody around me was speaking Spanish. At school, it wasn't really, to be able to speak Spanish, it wasn't cultivated. And so I just kind of spoke English because everybody else was speaking English. And so for us to see Spanish as an asset as opposed to a hindrance in our learning education is huge. And so I'm just so excited to be able to do that. Again, I started to pick up Spanish again when I was in high school because I wasn't able to speak my grandma and I was in different sports and the majority of the kids were speaking Spanish and it was con ser con tresas, not being able to speak Spanish. And that is, that is hard to get used to. And so it was one of those things. I was like, you know what, I need to do something about this. I need to change that. I will say, I didn't take Spanish in high school. I wish I would have. I took French. And I speak French en plus. That's it. That's all I know. But I will say that being bilingual and bilingual is, is something very close to my heart. Because I think the struggles that I would say I had in my educational experience from second grade or first grade through high school, I think some of those barriers could have been eliminated by having a more profound dual language education. And I think I'm so excited that we're able to offer a better learning opportunity for our students now, especially here at Adams. And so beyond ecstatic to be able to do that. One of the things that we saw in our students was the importance of resilience, being resilient. Since March thirteenth of 2020, there has been so much change. The end of the school year was different. Summer was different. The beginning of next school year was different. The transition from online to tutoring, the transition from online tutoring to in-person has been a huge transition for everybody, not just our students, not just our staff, families, daycares, our tech department, I mean, everybody. And I gotta say a huge shout out to our tech department. They've been amazing through this whole process. I send, in our partnership, you know, process, we sent, Doug and I sent lunch to them early on in the year and thanking them for all the work that they've been doing. Again, one of those focusing on partnership, relationships and leadership. And that relationship part was huge. But, and actually today, this is random and, and not part of my presentation, but I had one of the tech guys come today, Sergio, and asked me, hey, how's Mr. Caplici doing? I, I know he's been gone still and, you know, we just wanted to check up and see how he's doing. He said, hey, let us know, let him know we're thinking about him still. And so again, from the beginning, we worked on setting up those relationships. And again, Doug and I and Lorenzo now have really continued that process with all the people involved. Anyone that we interact with, you know, at the end of the day, we're here for kids. How can we best figure out how to do that? And it's just been neat to see. And so resilient has been one of those things that I would say, and I thank all of our Adams staff for exemplifying that in our community. With all the changes, schedule changes, learning modalities changes, everything, everything has been so different. The online pieces, all of that. And so it's been so fun to see our staff exemplify that in the community. And the community really take, follow that and, and, and be supportive of that. Say, hey, you know what, I know it's hard, but you're doing it, we can do it too. Hey, I know that's hard, you're doing it, we can do it too. And I think we, we've enjoyed, and I've enjoyed seeing that, we've enjoyed seeing that in our community and our staff. Huge learning curve for the families. Okay, most of these families didn't finish school, either in Mexico, some of them didn't finish school here. Doug and I, we had a parent night where people were coming and asking about where their group was, whether A or B. And they said, well, what, you know, if you're A through L, you're Group A. If you're M through Z, you're Group B. And then, you know, one of the questions was, well, my last name is Gonzalez, so am I A or B? And you know, some of the things that we, I think, take for granted and some of the basics, like, wait, it's the alphabet, like I, that is something that some of our families don't know, not all of them, but some of them. And so really taking a step back and trying to figure out where are they at and how can I best support them has been huge. And so I don't take for granted what they might or might not know. And so it's important for us to be able to share that. So I just want to say, our staff have really been resilient and shared that with our community. And, and thank you to our staff for all the work they've done. Rain or shine, we're out there supporting our students and welcoming them to our school. One of the things, I was walking by one of the campuses, the north part of our camp, on the south side of our campus, and I saw this sign outside of our window. And I'm kind of closing here in, in this, but it said, awesome things happen here. I took a picture of it and I just kept thinking, I'm like, this is a great way to, to say, or to summarize the things that I would say are happening here. Again, I'm biased because I'm the assistant principal, but I think Doug and I and Lorenzo would agree, awesome things are happening here. And we are just so excited to be able to be here and putting in that work. And so I'd like to show you guys a quick little video of just a little bit of the, the style or taste of the things that we've been doing here that I would say have made a huge impact in our staff.
Good afternoon. We're ready to do some bulldog hugs. We're super proud of all the kids that have had a chance to get a bulldog hug and thank you for all the hard work the teachers are doing as well. Mr. Contreras, go ahead.
Hey, guys. We're here again to do some more bulldog hugs. I am not a piano player, but
Second grade, Camelia Martinez-Malaga, Darlene Salazar and Eric Placina.
It's a completely different voice. It sounds a little funny. No, no, no. It kinda sounds a little funny. Everybody was in third grade, Ethan Barza Lopez, sister.
Hey, guys. How are you guys?
Good to see everybody. Welcome back to Bulldog Hug.
Yeah, gracias a todos por tanto esfuerzo que le han dado las clases. Esperemos que sigan luchando más y que disfruten su tiempo con sus maestras. También gracias por los partos, por llegar a las conferencias.
Hey, everybody. We wanted to say congratulations for everybody helping getting our school supplies and our food and all the things last week. But last month, we wanted to recognize teachers and peer educators. And so we are, every month, you have an opportunity to kind of nominate somebody in the Friday Focus and say what great things they're doing, unsung heroes that are unsung Bulldogs. And so we just want to say thank you for all your hard work to all the staff. What's up? Ready for a bulldog hug?
Hey, guys, just, because it's not like that whole neighborhood. So we're just going back and then just like throw down on my feet and go, I was trying to moonwalk. Go all the way down to my feet and go, that's, that's trying to moonwalk, right? All right, all right, ready? All right. Hey, guys. How are you doing?
Let's see. I just want to close in saying this, the Adams motto, again, I think from the beginning to the end, I think it's one of those things that we believe it's really ingrained in what we do. But I make a difference in the world, I learn, I lead, I lift up others and I'm a bulldog. So thank you guys again for letting us come and share a little bit of what we've been doing here at Adams.
Thank you, Jose. That was a wonderful presentation. It gave us a lot of information as well as being extremely entertaining. But I have one question for you. Have you slept at all this year?
You know, that is a great question. I have, yeah, I've slept. How much is the question, I think more specifically, how much I've slept. But no, we, we, we do, you know, we go home and at the end of the day, obviously, long days and some days are shorter, but you know, I will say it's been, it's been a lot of good work that's been happening here. Doug and I at the beginning and Lorenzo and I the last several weeks, just, just working, supporting our staff so that they can better support our students. And so I, I think that's been kind of our, again, our, our goal and our pillar. When we focus on pillar two and three, it's just making sure that we're in this together for our students. And so we, we've enjoyed that.
Well, it, it clearly shows that you've enjoyed it. I'm gonna let the rest of the board members weigh in and if they have any questions or comments that they'd like to share. Graciela, do you have anything? Looks like Graciela's frozen.
Oh, that makes me feel better than.
Well, I, I want to thank Jose and Doug and especially Lorenzo for the great job that you're doing over there. I always feel welcome when I come to visit you guys per the superintendent. But I really want to give a great appreciation to Lorenzo Alvarado, who is Vice Principal at Davis, doing scheduling and sharing his time when asked, did it with pleasure to go and assist while Doug was out. And I just, you know, that's love, that's appreciation, that's love for the students and the families. And to see him in action as I pass by in the morning sometimes, to see him out there with the families and the students and welcoming and all the teachers and the staff over there at Adams are doing a great job. And you guys keep up the great work and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don Raymond. Do you have anything?
Yes, I too want to say that I did very much enjoy the presentation. Adams does have a near and dear place to me, my heart. And so we do continue to work with those families and with Mi Pablito organization. So thank you for that. I do want to say, I appreciate the approach you're taking because the Adams School has always been a hub of the East Yakima community. And I really, really appreciate that. It continues to be that, that you continue to partnership. I really like the, the, your part, the pillars, you know, that you're partnering with the Grace of Christ and the Bethel AME Church and countless other partners in the community to raise student achievement, right? And, and so I really like that. It's, and I know it's, it's not easy work to do that, to balance all that, the community and students and families and teachers. And so I don't see you, Mr. Contreras, as being short, but I see you as a giant in our community. I see all of you as giants, right, as giant leaders in our community. You know that, I really like that you're really not, not only focusing on the school, which is important, and you guys are really doing a good job of that, but you're also focusing on the welfare and the needs of the surrounding neighborhoods and community. So that's why I say you guys are giants in my eyes for the work that you're doing. So thank you, Mr. Contreras, for your work and Mr. Caplici. And I also want to thank Mr. Alvarado for, for your work as well and for lending all your years, many years of experience and expertise to Adams. So we appreciate all the work that you're doing and just continue the work. And we know we're gonna get those kids where they need to be. So thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Graciela, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, but just want to thank you, Mr. Contreras, for all of your work. I really love the, the energy from you and Mr. Caplici. I think it's the, the video, I think, really did a great job of showing the energy, enthusiasm and love you have for the work you do and, 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 and the kids that goes to Adams Elementary. So I really appreciate that. I really appreciate all of the efforts that you all have taken to make sure your kids and families are welcome to, to, to the school. Like, that's a really, really important factor that helps all folks who might feel uncomfortable going to school feel a little bit more welcome and like, like they belong there. And so I thought that was really neat. And I just love seeing all of the, the connections that you all make to students and families and all of the extra supports you're providing around meals and gifts and books and different things like that. So thank you for all of your work. Thank you so much.
Yeah, one of the things that we've talked about too is that every, every interaction counts, right? And, and you never know what that one interaction might be that makes somebody decide to become a doctor or become a teacher, become a superintendent or a school board member or anything. And, and we have to be aware of that and make sure that every interaction with our students is great and is uplifting and that they're loved and appreciated and that they're able to do something. And I think, you know, we're, we're establishing a good foundation on where to build that. So thank you. I'm glad it's, yeah, you guys are noticing that. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Norm, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions at this time. I just wanted to compliment you on really looking at, at, at the whole child and doing whatever, whatever their needs are that you're really focused in and what kids' needs are and families' needs. And I really appreciate that. Oh, I do have one question though. I, with the size of your school and with, you have over, obviously over a hundred and thirty special needs students, I'm curious to how much support staff you have. How many?
So we have a counselor, a school counselor, we have a socio-emotional specialist, I think, that's her position. We have the MTSS position. We have Doug and I and two office staff members. But yeah, we will gladly always take more if more is given, so.
Yeah, well, I think when they ask us school counselor standards, is one counselor for two hundred and fifty students, we're running a little short for you. So hopefully somehow in our, our district can find a way to get you another counselor down there.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Norm. Mr. Caplici, do you want to weigh in on your assistant's prowess in presenting to us today?
Yeah, thank you so much. And I appreciate members of the board and Superintendent Green. I, I really do want to weigh in and thank you for the opportunity. Mr. Contreras really jumped out of his comfort zone and I just appreciate everything that he has done as a brand-new principal. Lorenzo and I both have fifteen-plus years of experience and we've talked about what a superstar Mr. Contreras is and the superstars of the staff. I have to say, the members of our community and the, the parents have really been the MVPs this year because we've never been closer. We've never been closer in those intimate, you know, the, the remote learning, hybrid learning. And I can't say thank you enough to our parents. And then also, thank you for, just from my own personal side of things, the district team and the district YSD members that have reached out to me through just trying to get out of the hospital and get off oxygen and some of the things. I, I just, I can't say thank you enough to Superintendent Green and his leadership and, and, and all, all members of the cabinet that have reached out. And so I just, thank you. And Mr. Contreras, excellent job. I miss, I miss having fun, man. I miss having fun with you and get off this oxygen. Um, I miss, I miss having fun, man. I miss having fun with you and, uh, get off this oxygen and we get some bulldog hugs again and get some high fives or some, some virtual high fives with some of our kids and, uh, just keep the energy going. But, um, thank you for supporting our culture and climate and what we're trying to do and the public relations that we're trying to build. Um, I just, again, appreciate everybody within the Yakima community.
Yeah, when I saw bulldog hugs on the presentation in your little video, I, I wondered to myself, what does a bulldog hug look like? I've seen bulldogs attacking trash cans and all sorts of things, but I've never quite seen a bulldog hug. Now I know what that looks like. So thank you for that visual. And Doug, it really is good to see you. We are so glad that you're, that you're on the road to mend. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
Thank you to the board members for expressing all of your thoughts and gratitude to the staff and leadership at Adams. You put it so eloquently. I don't need to add much, uh, but of course I will. And I want to call to attention, uh, to the board, the great change in the culture and, uh, growth at Adams. Uh, you noticed the slide that was almost all red. Uh, those are negative indicators or opportunities for improvement. And then you saw how that transformed to entirely blue. Uh, that cannot be understated. Uh, we know that the Center for Educational Effectiveness reached out, uh, thinking that, uh, there was something, uh, wrong going on with their data, but only to find out that, uh, uh, the work that's happening at Adams to set a culture is exceptional. Uh, there's a saying that, uh, uh, culture eats strategy for breakfast. And, uh, I, I think that that has been in play at Adams, uh, with the leadership that we've had. I also, uh, want to restate what Reverend Davis shared, and that is the gratitude to Lorenzo, uh, for stepping in. Uh, I, uh, trained under Lorenzo as an intern. Uh, I was at Washington when he was a principal and his leader, so he's forgotten more about being a principal, uh, than, uh, Jose knows currently. But Jose, under the tutelage of Lorenzo and working with Doug, I know you've only been there a short time. I'm excited for you and what you're picking up, uh, under, under Lorenzo and then under, uh, and it's not even under those individuals, it's working with them. So thank you for your continued dedication and growth. And Lorenzo, thank you. He, uh, you may not know this, but he's the first recipient of the Stick Your Neck Out Award here that we've given to our leadership, uh, for going, uh, beyond his comfort zone, coming from Davis High School where he has been for so many years and working in the secondary, uh, level for his career, uh, to enter into the elementary and be with, uh, the kiddos there in Adams. Personally, thank you Lorenzo publicly. Appreciate your leadership. Appreciate you being such a team player and, uh, for not only loving the Davis community, but for loving the Yakima community. And thank you to you as well, Jose, Doug and your entire staff. Uh, you're only as good as your staff and, uh, you've really done a great job in building them up and setting some consistency, even though you're currently out Doug, but Jose and everyone else chipping in, uh, to show that we are committed to having some, uh, stable leadership at that school. So thank you.
Speaking of bulldogs, I have a person who walks a bulldog past my house every single day about this time. And they're just down the street. So if you hear the security team going on alert, that's because they're, they recognize that the bulldog is just down the street. Thank you all. Go ahead.
Before we go, is, is it possible to hear from Lorenzo, from the Alvarado before?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Lorenzo, do you have anything to add?
Of course. Um, so number one, it's been a privilege and an honor to be able to help. I don't know if you guys noticed, but during the summer I was assigned as a mentor for Jose. And coincidentally, I was asked to help at Adams. So Jose and I, I had already established a relationship and it was a pretty good relationship. And it was easy to say yes when asked by Trevor and Clint. And, uh, you know, Doug Caplicki has a dad named Guy Caplicki and Guy Caplicki and I go way back. So when I heard I was getting to help Doug, this was a no brainer. You know, what they've established, what they've started there, what they have going is a good thing. It's easy to get really excited about positive energy and there's nothing but positive energy at Adams. Now that said, it's a pretty challenging building. It's a building that's been hurting for a number of years that is finally getting to a better place. And it's, it's exciting to be part of a team that's helping take that, that, that group to a better place. And I know that they miss Doug and I know that they're enjoying Jose and I know that they're putting up with Lorenzo. So I'm excited about Doug coming back. Uh, I, I'm, I'm happy to hear that he's getting healthy. It's been a, a joy working with Jose. He's a young guy with a lot of energy and with a lot of years ahead of him. And, uh, he does put in endless hours and he's very dedicated to the kids, the families and the staff. And I think in that order, and that's just the way it should be. This is all about doing what's right for kids and their families and that community. And it's, it's exciting times at Adams Elementary. And, uh, it's been a good experience for me to get back in there and be part of this. And I'm going to tell you, it's a lot of work, but it's the right work. So thank you. And I, I enjoyed the opportunity that I'm getting and I'm also excited that Doug will be back soon in person. So Doug, can't wait for you to be back, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo. That was wonderful. Um, we have a little bit more on our agenda. You all are welcome to stay, but we completely understand if you have other things that are calling your name and, um, you need to go. We won't be offended. We know how riveting school board meetings are though. So, you know.
You're not talking to the cabinet, are you Martha? Cause they need to stay.
No, I'm talking to the Adams staff. So thank you all. Have a great afternoon. It was a wonderful presentation. Well, that was fun. I enjoyed that. Just the visual of a bulldog hug is going to haunt me for the rest of the night. Um, next on our agenda is a waiver of graduation credit requirement application process. Trevor, do you want to weigh in on this before we throw it to Rob?
Uh, actually, we could just move directly to Rob. Thank you, Martha.
Dr. Darling.
Good evening, esteemed board members and, um, Super Ed, President Rice, thank you for having me. So this is more, this is, um, an introductory, um, portion. There's no action to be taken. But this is to provide you with the process to which, um, students will be able to receive the additional graduation credits that were awarded, um, for this year. Then following this, um, Bob Noe will present the, uh, amended resolution that goes with it. So students to receive graduation credits will have to go through five steps. The first one is they have to meet with the academic council designee, will request a waiver from the principal and they'll, they'll present a rationale, the details of specific circumstances in which the warrant, that warrant the request. And if that, if the student believe they should qualify, then they'll meet with their counselor prior to May 17th. And so you're aware, um, every senior that's graduating has been contacted already by their school administrators, their counselors and their grad specialists around this. So this information has already been happening behind the scenes prior to this. So they're not waiting for this, uh, for tonight to make this stuff put into practice. Step two is a principal will consider the following factors in granting the waiver. The academic history of a student, the plans put in place by the school to support the student in meeting graduation requirements, specific disruption to coursework and assessments based on the school's closure in spring of 2020 and subsequent limited in-person academic access in the format of schooling for the 2020, 2021 school year. And the level of preparation the student receives for their post-secondary plans and whether or not this level of preparation would be affected with or without the waiver. Step three, if the waiver is granted, the principal will submit a formal letter to the student that describes the specific credits waived and a copy of this letter will also be placed in the student's Q and file. Step four, if the waiver is not granted, the principal will submit a formal letter to the student that describes the rationale for declining the waiver and the individual student's plans to meet credit requirements. The copy will place in the student's file. And step five, if the waiver is not granted, the student may request an appeal. An appeal board appointed by the building principal will hear the appeal and make a final decision. The board, this appeal board will consist of at least one counselor and educator with experience in trauma-informed instruction and culturally responsive education. And when appropriate, a specialist or an EL teacher or a migrant student advocate. Now, this is just the one-page document that the process goes through. The actual process itself is about five or six pages and has a series of checklists. And if yes, go here, if no, go here. And so it's, it's a very in-depth, detailed process to make sure that we can, um, that we're able to support students in reaching the graduation requirements as, as much as we possibly can. What questions do you have?
Thank you, Rob. Are there any questions from board members?
I do have a question, but I'm trying to formulate it still in my mind because I, I had to take a quick break.
In kindergarten, I thought of a brain break.
Any other questions from board members? And we can come back to Raymond when he's got his, his question formulated. Is this the first year that we've taken advantage of the waiver process? Rob, do you know?
So we had a waiver last year that allowed us to waive elective credits. And this is a, and we took advantage of that last year. And then this year is the first time we're able to do the elective credits and required credits. So this allows us to waive, uh, a couple of required credits. So we've taken advantage every time it's been available to us.
And do you know off the top of your head if there were many students last year that took advantage of that?
You know, I don't believe I've ever received that information. I will find out and get, get that information to you.
It's just, it was just a wondering on my part.
Yeah.
Raymond, have you got your question yet?
Uh, maybe halfway, but I'm just going to go ahead and ask it anyway. It just has to do with kids or students be prepared for whatever next steps that they take, whether that's college, trade school or a job. How would this impact them in that manner?
Well, I'm glad you asked that because there are, there, there, well, there may be some possible negative implications for students waiving credits. Some students may be accepted for a college contingent upon them passing courses A, B and C. And if they have one of those courses waived, the university may rescind that college application offer. And so the, the, the councils and administrators are very aware of that component of it. And so they're working with students to make sure, and with universities also, to make sure that if these courses are waived, will it then negate the student's opportunities to go on to a different career path or in the secondary education opportunities? And so those are some of the tricky components to offering these waivers. The universities are aware of these waivers and so they, they have been reaching out and communicating with higher, with public ed around this issue. But again, we're not sure how all the universities are going to respond if some of those core credits are waived that were contingent upon a student accepting, uh, being accepted at that university.
And I'm also thinking about, once they get to even a community college or, you know, their placement scores in English, math, how might that affect, be affected as well? Seems like they might start at a lower level, have to spend more time and, and remediation.
Right. And, and part of the, part of what this course is, this, the, the wording and the intent of it is saying, had this student been giving, been given enough time and enough in-person learning? The student has the foundation and the, and the, already has the foundational knowledge and the ability to pass the course. And that, that thus waiving it, which in a sense is a, is a high school's way of saying, we know the student has, is able to meet the minimal requirements to pass this course. So we're going to grant the waiver. They're not going to grant a waiver for a student who has not shown up at all, has not shown any level of proficiency at all. I don't think this is going to be a, I don't think it's going to apply to, uh, to the majority of the students. I don't think the majority of the students are going to be able to have these credits waived because their core requirements for a reason and they, and the, and they have to be able to show that they would be able to reach proficiency. Does that answer your, your question you were formulating?
Yes, thank you.
I'm wondering. Go ahead.
I was just going to say Raymond and I are in sync, so we can finish each other's thoughts.
I'm wondering if it would be informative to board members to know at some point after graduation, um, how many students waived how many credits?
Absolutely.
And then, and maybe in what, whether they were core or electives?
I would like to know that, to see if it was core or electives, what, what they, what they choices were to know, you know.
We can have that information to you. I'm, uh, I would anticipate at the, um, in, by, in one of our July meetings.
Okay, there's only one meeting in July. So you have the, almost the whole month to take care of that.
Alrighty, I will do my best.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, thank you, Rob. Um, next item on the agenda is approval of resolution 11.20.21, emergency waiver of high school graduation credits. Trevor?
As I pass this to Bob, I just want to thank him for his work, uh, to prepare, uh, items such as these for the board. Uh, so thank you and thank you to Rob for his presentation. So, uh, without further ado, uh, Bob, would you take over?
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, good evening, board. So this is a follow-up to Rob Darling's presentation. This is the resolution that is required for the board to pass in order to implement what Rob was talking about. The State Board of Education promulgated WAC 180 dash 111 in response to COVID. And, you know, taking into account the impacts it had on students, especially some of the ones trying to graduate and may have, I mean, maybe on the bubble for credits. So that they provided two additional potential, uh, credit waivers. In order to do it though, the board needs to approve the resolution. So that's what's presented to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, would, what is the board's preference? I know that the, there's some technical information in the resolution. Do you want it read out loud or have you had enough, enough opportunity to review it?
I've had enough opportunity to review it.
I've read it, so I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay. And I saw thumbs up from Raymond. So, um, rather than go through what is a pretty dense resolution, um, are there any questions for Bob about the resolution or comments? Okay, seeing none, I would.
Sorry, I couldn't find, I like, in the last section, it says that students will have, let me, let me find it again, the opportunity to earn credits needed to complete graduation requirements, uh, through continued enrollment beyond the planned graduation date. So I really like that plan. So I wanted to mention that.
I think that's a good plan. And they would do that probably through summer school? It's a question for staff.
Do you have answered that, Rob?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Um, students who want to actually, um, that maybe have waived that credit but want to actually acquire the credit? They can do that after graduation through summer school?
Yes, correct.
Okay, good. Good, good. So maybe that answers part of your question, Raymond. About, um, and, and maybe some of the concern that, that parents or other, or institutions might have as to whether the kids can actually gain the credit or not.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion. Let me get back to it. Entertain a motion that the board approves resolution 11.20.21, emergency waiver of high school graduation credits.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Graciela. Is there any discussion? I just want to extend my appreciation to the state board for, um, being so responsive to the requests from school districts and school directors in implementing this. This is kind of, this is, it's not something that is written into permanent language. It's an emergency thing and we've been through a year of emergencies. So, um, I appreciate their flexibility in, in allowing for this to happen. Okay, any other discussion? Barb, could you call roll please?
Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
Graciela Villanueva.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Raymond Navarro, Jr.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Pass, the vote passes five to zero.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is approval of WASDA permanent position legislative proposals. This that is included in this agenda item is a proposal that I received from the Riverview School District, which is over in the Carnation Duval area. Some of you may be aware that they are very proactive in their advocacy for students and student voice. And they asked if we would consider signing on to this permanent position proposal that will go to the resolutions committee. So Norm will see this in his work on that committee. And I told them I would be happy to share this with you all and get your feedback if you have any, or if there is an interest in taking a, a vote for approval.
I would like to speak, need to take a vote for approval of this.
Is that a motion, Don?
I could make it a motion, a move that we vote to approve this legislation for WASDA.
It's a permanent position for student voice.
For student voice.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I do have a question. I'm just wondering, what does this mean? Does that mean that our board will have a student representative or two? Because it's very, very general and even specific in the second paragraph, that student voice and advocacy should be considered in all major educational decisions. So that's the question. It's, it doesn't say what boards or what groups or anything that will, they will be part of. So just wondering if you can elaborate on that.
I'd be happy to. I spoke with the author of this, Lori Oviette, which some of you may, who some of you may know. And I spoke with her about it because that was my question exactly. Were they, is this going to be a permanent position where school boards would be maybe not required, but encouraged to have student representatives on their board? And this is a discussion that our board had had. And she assured me that that was not the intent of this proposal, that it's more for just engagement of students and, and allowing students to advocate with decision makers and also advocating on their behalf with other decision makers like legislators and so on. I shared with her our student voice and advocacy, what that looks like in Yakima with the superintendent student advisory committee of forty or so kids from all four of our element, all four of our middle schools and I think Discovery Lab, I think there's one on there from Discovery Lab. The middle school at Discovery Lab. As well as all of our high school programs are represented in that forty-ish number. And she thought that that was an excellent way to gather student voice and allow for student, for students to advocate for themselves with, with decision makers. So it doesn't, it, it doesn't place boards in any required position or pressured position to place student reps on the board, but just allow for them to have a voice.
Thank you. I just want to be clear, I'm not against having student representatives on the board. I just wanted clarification on this proposal. So thank you.
Raymond.
Yeah, and just another clarification on, on permanent positions. They're not legislative positions. They're statements of belief or statements of value from WASDA saying that they, they believe that this is a valuable way or to function and operate as a school board. So again, even in this one, it doesn't specify the structure in which you receive your student voice or get student input, but it just, it states that there's a value in having, that we believe there's a value in having student representation in all major decisions that we make as, as a board of directors and that we have some kind of vehicle in order to provide that student voice. So I think in terms of having a single representative on the board, it doesn't mandate that particular structure. Oh, I, I like our structure. I like the idea of having a group of students that, that we systematically receive their voice and, and go from there. Again, that's, it's not a legislative proposal. It's a, it's a, it's a position statement.
Right, right now, that is a permanent position for WASDA and several other districts and boards have a group of students that the superintendent meet and they bring information back and that's a good thing. Martha and I, we've been working on this for how many years, Martha? Going forward, you know, you know, that's, that's, that's the position because there are several big districts on the west side that have a, a, a student voice. And it, it gets from all the students. And it bring back to the superintendent and the superintendent feeds to the, to the school board. And I think that's, this is the great way to do it. We have a great student advisory to the superintendent that's very sharp and have great ideas and on proposals on policies and we have used some of it. So it's working for us, so.
And again, as, when this goes to resolutions committee, again, I, I kind of, my first reaction was a little bit like Raymond's. I thought, is this a, the title of it states student representative to school board or something on that effect? And I think as, since I get to be on the board, or the committee that edits and, and rewrite some of these things, that we can look at wording so that it's clear that it isn't mandating necessarily a particular structure, but that it's, that it's advocating for some form of student representation. So that's something that can be worked out in, in editing and continuing process. So lucky me, I get to help do that.
Graciela, did you have a question?
I, I did, but my question was essentially what Raymond asked, so my question's been answered. Thank you.
I did work with the author. The original language was the inclusion of the word "on" in the first sentence after "representation." So it would have said authentic student representation on and engagement with school boards. And I shared with her that the, that, that word would tend to exclude districts such as mine who don't see them, don't see their model in that resolution. And so she's pulled that. And I appreciate her flexibility in doing that. Are there, this, this will, with our, once it goes through the, the process and the permanent position process is much like the legislative position process where it, the, the proposal is submitted, the resolutions committee will look at it and review it and maybe change some words or not change some words. And either approve it, reject it, or send it back to the originating board for rework. And then we'll undoubtedly see this at general assembly in September for the entire delegate body to vote on. So I expect that there will not be any problem getting this position through the resolutions committee. It seems to be like one of those, well, duh, don't we have that yet? And I appreciate the Riverview School District submitting this. Is there any other questions or comments?
Martha, I, I just wanted to say that the Yakima School District is already doing a lot of this work. We know that a student voice is important and an important piece of what we're trying to do. And so I would say that this position is really aligned to what we're already doing. So I would support that, this position.
Thank you, Raymond. We do have a motion on the floor to approve the permanent position proposal entitled Student Voice. It was moved by Don and seconded by Graciela. If there are no further comments, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Davis, Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Graciela Villanueva.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Mr. Raymond Navarro, Jr.
Aye.
Mr. Norman Walker.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Barb. I'll let Lori know. She'll be, she'll be very excited to hear this. I did forward to the board this afternoon a draft of a legislative proposal that I will bring back to you next week. And once I've gotten some, maybe some language tweaks done, it, it is, it deals with the development of an equity-based funding formula for pre-K-12 education to replace the current prototypical school model funding formula. If staff or board members have any language changes that they'd like to suggest or tweaking of language that they'd like to suggest, I'm open to that. I will be forwarding this draft language to a couple of boards that have already asked to see it so that they can approve it or at least review it. It would be, it's important to me that we have for this particular type of proposal, some representation from various parts of the state as well as representation from small districts and large districts as well. So I will be kind of shopping this around to folks in the next week or so. All of these have to be turned in by the 14th and of May. So if you have questions about the draft language that I sent you, or if you have some language change suggestions, just get in touch with me, okay? Okay, next item on the agenda are superintendent updates. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rice. My first comment and members of the board, I appreciate all of you and the opportunity to share some information with you today. I'm very heartened to see that we're joining forces with the Riverview, Riverview School District. Dr. Tony Smith has been there for quite a long time, a great leader, a great friend, so I'm excited for that partnership. The success of our superintendent student advisory council cannot be understated. And I only bring that up because of the conversation about what's happening with Riverview and the proposal that came before us. In fact, you may remember, but I'll state this again because it's occurring this week. The Yakima Schools Foundation is actually recognizing the work of the superintendent student advisory council with an award this week. So if you did not know that, they have their 30th annual fundraiser, their 30th anniversary. And they have a featured speaker who is Noe Alvarez, author of Spirit Run: A 6,000-Mile Marathon Through North America's Stolen Land and alumnus from Davis High School. So we're excited for that. And I believe that Dr. Pimpleton is speaking as well. So it's going to be quite an event in the afternoon on Wednesday. It is a virtual event. And we're excited not only for the recognition of our student advisory council, but the exposure to the great work that they've done, especially around the equity policy. And I look forward to next year after the completion of the policy to see how they will continue to contribute and give input to the board on matters that affect students as ultimately the people that we serve first and foremost in the district. Other items of interest for the board today, I did meet with our tech director today and there are some items to share with you. We are replacing close to 1,500 hotspots due to significant issues, defects actually, that have become exposed and it will be at no cost to us. But we will start at the end of the week to replace 1,450 hotspots. And I'm excited about, again, Project Gemini, because once we have that up completely running, we would not be at the mercy of the hotspots like we are currently in some cases. In addition, E-Rate, through E-Rate, we are looking at a potential $2.7 million application for network improvements, which we do believe we will be able to secure. And once that is formulated, we will bring that before the board and make sure that you have all of the details about that $2.7 million application that we are committed to achieving. In addition, one item that I have not shared with the board yet is that there is a planned move for our tech department. We are looking at relocating tech from central office to the old Stanton site. So that is being cleaned up and some small renovations made to make sure that it is appropriate for our tech department, which will create some more opportunities for some services here in one location for our community. So that's another exciting move that will take place in the month of June or early July. Regarding the enrollment for Kinder, we're currently at 470 students who have enrolled. We have over 800 spaces unfilled. But that is not a huge concern at this time because we are on par with our pace in previous years at this current moment. So 470 signed up, 800 spaces currently unfilled, not worried about that yet. Any questions thus far?
Questions from the board?
Okay, I'll move on to some.
I have a slow trigger finger. I was, I was looking through my old emails to see if I had the invitation from the Schools Foundation event and I, I've inadvertently erased it from my email. So is there someone who can send me that invitation?
Absolutely. Kirsten, would you be able to post that? Yep.
Thanks.
Kirsten and I are like-minded. I saw her start typing right away. I think she was getting ready to send that. So we'll make sure that's in the chat. And so that you can attend that event. Thank you.
Yeah. Do we know how many of the Kinders that have registered so far are kids that would have attended kindergarten last year? Had it not been for the parent, parent reluctance and getting kids into school?
No, we, we currently don't have that information, but that is something that, once we have enrollment completed, we can get for the board.
That might be informative for the board, so thank you for that.
Other questions thus far? All right, so we are going to have some, kind of a fun moment here. I've asked, oh, not yet, Barb, not this one. I've asked, not, not that kind of fun yet. We're actually, we're actually going to share with the board the style guide for Washington Middle School, the renaming and their mascot. So there's been a lot of work that has taken place to come up with the appropriate mascot. And I've asked Kirsten to take us through, so she'll take over the screen and share with you the next information.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Green. So just a reminder.
So just a reminder, we do have up on the screen, and I'll take you through what the outcome was of Policy 4226, School Mascots and Other Identification. As Trevor indicated, maybe about a month ago now, they did complete the process at Washington. And they being the administration team, which is Principal Bill Hilton and Assistant Principal Nick Mifflin and Assistant Principal Gonzalo Guillen. Wanted to remind you that Gonzalo Guillen has supported several years of student leadership at Washington Middle School, even in his previous role, where students were inspired to impact the naming and potential mascot change for Washington. So this has been in the works for years. As you know, there is legislation now that is suggesting changes to mascots where applicable. But their interest and proactiveness was was far ahead of that law. So they they didn't need that to make a change in in culture and climate for their their school. So they have an extensive brand style guide. And I will take you through this quickly, given that it is 6:18 p.m. on school board night. This is the lion that they have chosen. So if you recall, they were the Colonials. Now they are the Lions. Their style guide takes them through the purpose. And this is a great nine-page guide for administrators and for staff and the community that helps them stay on track with the proper use of their logo. It expresses the colors that are to be used with their new branding. So you can see they they used to have just the black. They mainly used black and white. Now they have black. They have a flat silver, a metallic silver, and then various golden colors that they've used with their lion. They have different fonts that are usable along with their logo. And what I like as a communications person who has to make sure they use branding appropriately is that it shows what not to do. So it gives examples of how not to use their logo. So they have that there. The logo components are kind of fun, and I'll see if I can blow this up a little bit more for you. They have the head only. But then they also have a standing, which is more of their academic and a bit of their activities logo that they use. And then for athletics only, they chose this jumping version of the logo. And with the creativity of our superintendent, he brought in, if you can see, a slight W in the main of these fierce lions. And so that was a creative feature that was brought in by our superintendent. You can see it really nicely here on the head. But it's subtle enough that it doesn't really jump out at you unless you know. We've also given examples of use of the logo. So coincidentally, they are printing, because it's picture day in the Yakima School District this week, they are printing new lanyards and new badges for the students next week when they do their launch of this new lion's logo. But here's all the different ways that they can use it. Our brand specialist actually provided 80 different logo files for them to use depending on the the different examples that they have. So you can see how they could bring it into water bottles, into shirts, into their their school photos. And then this is an addition that we are doing for them. They indicated that they have a spirit campaign that runs. And so it's Lion Pride that they will have. And we've given them some specific logos into how to use their Lion Pride Spirit Campaign. They can put those on hoodies, again, on their water bottles. You can see this nice one. So I'm sure they'll think they need a new scoreboard now, right? But that looks really nice there. And then you can see how the athletic logos run too with that jumping lion. You know, really looks ferocious. And here's some of their athletic uniforms that would be utilized with the athletic jumping lion. There's this green, what might stand out at you. What it is is just an example of how to use the logo in proper color. But you can use it on a if there's a particular program that's happening, like We Day. I remember we had fluorescent T-shirts for We Day one year. You can still put the logo on top of a color without changing the logo at all. So you can see this is an example of a STEM camp. Also, an opportunity, Proud Jazz Choir Parent with fonts that are available for different support organizations. So that is the new brand style guide working with Washington Middle School this week to plan our launch for next week. So we can do a launch for their staff and also then, of course, their students and school community. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Kirsten. Any questions from board members?
You're on mute, Martha.
That's probably the most extensive branding package I've ever seen out of a middle school. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else before we move to the COVID response presentation?
Yes, I do have a few more items. And if you've ever taught or worked at a middle school, you know that you need extensive guidance. So that's probably good that they have the nine pages. I'll expedite the finalization of my superintendent's report. I did want to bring attention to the board and the community that the Spring 2021 Needs Assessment Survey opens today, Monday, April 26, and it closes on Monday, May 10. And the purpose of the survey is to gather information to help the Yakima School District identify, understand, and prioritize the needs of our parents, guardians, students, and staff. And there are separate surveys for each of those groups. And that can be found at www.ysd7.org on the main page where you can connect. So that starts today and runs through May 10. Also, the equity policy is on pace to be presented to the board in mid-June. I'm excited for the multiple presentations that have taken place or are scheduled to take place over the next week, week and weeks. We are presenting, Dr. Pimpleton and I, presented to our Native American parent group today. We are presenting to the migrant PAC group on Wednesday. I am taking our equity policy to the Seattle area. I am presenting to for Leadership Tomorrow, which is an organization in Seattle and to leaders across the Seattle area to get some insight about how our policy lands on people that are not from this area. And then also, we are presenting to all of our union leadership on Friday to have their input as well on the equity policy thus far. And I commend as well the students who engaged in the process and have really contributed wonderfully to the development of the of the equity policy. And then we'll bring that to the board on June 1. It'll come for uploading, for presentation to the board, again, for finalization on the 15. And then lastly, I would share that, you know, we did recognize Lorenzo and all of the work that he put forth in transitioning over to Adams. If I could go back, which I can, so I'm mentioning this now for the record. I'm grateful to Principal McDaniel and being able to tighten up the supports at Davis and allow the flexibility for Lorenzo to go over to Adams and help out where needed. So kudos to Ryan McDaniel for his selflessness in that and working to make the supports available for Jose and the Adams family. The last items that I would share is that we've seen some great leadership from the the district in the upper levels with our executive directors and our directors and our principals. And we know that Clint Endicott has been named the superintendent of the Tenino School District, or I hope you know that. So kudos to Clint, he's not here. But also, we had another executive director interview for the White Salmon Superintendent position. And that's Dr. Sean McGinnity, who was selected a couple of days ago or last week. And that announcement is forthcoming. So kudos to to Sean McGinnity. And then the latest is Amanda Jewell, who will be joining Clint Endicott in Tenino as the Assistant Superintendent. So we have some executive director positions that are opening. And it's a great thing because we are seeing people advance to positions where they can pursue greater opportunities for leadership. And they're leaving because of the success that we've had here and the opportunities that that has presented and afforded them in advancing their careers. So we're looking forward to celebrating all of those individuals, but also then in filling those positions and what that means to our organization as new people enter and provide different ideas and opportunities. And hopefully, those individuals will come from within our organization. So it's always wonderful where we see the advancement from from within. And at that, I conclude my superintendent update.
Thank you, Trevor. Well, congratulations to Clint, who I think we've known about, but also to Sean and Amanda for their new positions. I don't know that Yakima is quite used to growing them up so that they can go somewhere else. And this is a good thing. This is a good thing. Okay. Next, we have the COVID-19 response reports, correct?
Yes, thank you. And I will turn that over to Stacy. Stacy?
So just a couple things to note here, and I cannot see you only have one screen at this point. But just to share, our contact tracing is not as high as it was the week coming off of spring break, but we are still averaging way over 100 cases per week. 106 this last week for a total of 878 so far since January 4. Our weekly positive tests diminished drastically. They we ended up having seven students and two staff for a total of nine positive cases this last week. I can already tell you, though, this this Monday, we're seeing kind of an because this Monday, it was already back up into three or four already on a Monday in the investigation. So we're just kind of seeing in up and down. Our weekly positive test, again, you can see the graph carrying forward from January 4. We've we've kind of been all over the place, but the last few weeks asymptomatic testing was was way down this week, down to only 13 tests were administered. I know that more people were turning those in today as we were having a meeting, as they were turning them in. So we should see more than 13 asymptomatic tests administered this coming week. But thus far, we've administered 619 tests in the works. Last week, I mentioned our mobile vaccine clinics. We have confirmed that today. Here are the schools that will be receiving those clinics, the dates that are scheduled, the full number of the point of contact at each school. And they will be onsite from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. each day. You can see we have the the double site at Davis and at Ike Bow so that we get both the A and B cohorts having opportunities to to receive that vaccine. It will be the Pfizer vaccine, if anybody is interested. And a reminder that this is available for anybody in the area. And as you can see, we with the COVID response team, we thoughtfully examined where would be the best place to to put these clinics and to provide that support to our school families and community. So that is kind of it there. There will be outside clinics. And we had our first preliminary planning go on today over at Hoover Elementary. So any any questions for me?
Questions for Stacy? I'm presuming that that list is going to be posted on the website?
Yes, as soon as we're waiting for links each individual school can can plan how they want to send that information out to their families. They they all do it a little bit differently. And then Kirsten is working with Jessica Post once we have all the scheduling links for all the different schools for and get that posted on the on the website.
Perfect. I did notice that neither Jules nor Stacy's presentation has been loaded to Board Docs yet. Could we make sure that that happens? Doesn't have to happen right this second, but maybe sometime this week.
I apologize for that. I thought we were just using it for the meeting last week. So that's that's my fault. I didn't get it uploaded. I apologize.
No, no, it's we we've not. I don't know that we specifically asked to have them updated uploaded to this point. But I responded to an email from I don't know if she's a parent or just a citizen. And fortunately, was able to provide the link for the reports from last week. But it occurred to me that if if we have to respond to someone who asks a question or if we want to go back and review, it might be helpful to have those presentations loaded up into Board Docs.
Absolutely. And and that information is also listed weekly on our website. It's on the district website for community to take a look at, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Stacy?
Jewel, would you like to go ahead and present? We'll see if Barb's presentation has settled down a little bit.
It was a strobe light effect.
There we go.
Okay, so just so you know, Martha, my data is always up to date the day of. So I don't know that it gets in the Board Docs right away because, like, today it was, well, the meeting went long, so I had plenty of time to update. But sometimes I'm really scrambling to update for the day of.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be. It doesn't necessarily have to be the day of the board meeting. Just if we could get it uploaded sometime that week so that we can have it for reference if we need it.
All right, thank you. So this is looking at daily cases. Again, we're kind of all over up and down. For today, the days cases were 90 for today, but we only had 22 yesterday. So it it kind of evens out, but go on to the next one. Oh, too fast. Can't talk that fast. So today, there we go. Today, 4:25, you see is at 22, but then 4:26, which isn't on there. The the data is on there, but not the date is at 90 today, and that's it's one of our highs. So like like Stacy said, today was pretty much an uptick. All right, next. We have 257 per 100,000 for a 14-day rate as of yesterday. Because they go Monday through Sunday, so that's yesterday's rate. The seven-day rate per 100,000 is 116.8. Remember, the CDC recommended under 100 for for seven days. Our ZIP code data, it's all kind of an uptick there, except for the 98902 went down a little, but every other one went up from last week or stayed the same. But we haven't hit the peak that we did a couple of weeks ago. Hospitalizations went down this week, which was nice. We kind of stayed at 14 for a while, and we went down to nine today. So that was that was a good thing. Our positivity rate has always stayed right around 10. 10.9 for as of Saturday. Those are always a little delayed. And then our school age cases. Stacy talked about this last week, that we had many more students in Yakima School District that were up to date. But remember, this is county. So up until yesterday, 19% of the total cases, we had 21 new students and six new staff as of yesterday. And then our school age data for the trend data, it's gone down, like Stacy said. And then our school age data for the trend data, it's gone down, like Stacy said, from last week, but it's still, still up there a little ways. Our, the, if you look at the percentages and the rate per 100,000 over there in the legend, our rate per 100,000 has gone down with the school age cases, but the percentage of school age cases has gone up a little bit. We were averaging at 15. We had 119 in there, but now we're at two weeks in a row of 18 and 19%. And then this is the forecast, and then the focus area for the forecast. Happy to say my forecast is off, even though we had 90 today. I plotted in last week's cases and noticed the plot, the orange plot there is going down, and my forecast went up this week. So I might be off by a week on what the caseload is, but I'm glad to see it trended down instead of up. We'll see what the rest of the week holds, since we had 90 today. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for Jewel? Okay. Next, we have items of board interest. Are there any items that board members wish to bring to the attention of the rest of the board?
Martha, I do just have a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to take us back to the equity policy. So I'm just wondering, I was thinking about this before when we were having that discussion, is how will we measure how we're doing on this, in our progress of equity? Will it be an annual report? It does state in, in the policy, there'll be regular updates from the superintendent. So I'm just wondering about that whole process. Do we have to incorporate that into our board policies as well? So that's one of the items that we see on an annual or whatever basis. So, you know, and other things too. I know we can, excuse me, we can measure progress or success in equity in regards to closing the achievement gaps or disparities, but I personally would like to see more. I mean, how are we transforming systems? You know, I think I wrote some things down, you know, the climate and culture, I think we have some of this information. How are we implementing a shared leadership model? How are we receiving critical perspectives from diverse stakeholders? And how do we determine high-quality teaching? There's a lot in there to really, to look at, and if we're going to measure progress. And so I'm just kind of thinking about that. I'm not trying to spur a discussion here, just something that I like to put out there for the superintendent and the team to think about, and Dr. Pimpleton. So that's one thing. Then the other thing is, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to spur a discussion or debate or anything here, but I do need to say these things. You know that there are a lot of topics that the board faces, and education faces across the country, and there's a lot of differing viewpoints. And the topic of equity is no different, right? And so, you know, there's, I believe that the board is a strong board, and while we are influenced by outside thinking or opinions, I believe that the board, and maybe ask me for myself, that we are engaging in the work, we are learning, and we're under the tutelage of Dr. Pimpleton, where I think we're getting a good, solid foundation in terms of equity. And so I just wanted to make mention of that, that while there's a political wave going on out there with terms of equity, I think our board is solid and strong, and we're making the right decisions based on what we believe, what the board believes is best for the students of the Yakima School District. So, you know, I know the critical race theory is a big, big thing out there, and there's a lot of disagreement. And there's a lot of, lot of writings, a lot of articles, a lot of, there's legislation, there's legislation they're considering right now in terms of requiring critical race theory in public education. So I just wanted to mention that, that I think that while all these influencers are going on, I think the board is doing its homework and it's making decisions based on what's best for our students. So I just wanted to make those two comments. Thank you.
Thank you Raymond. Anyone else want to share anything with the rest of the board? I did want to let you know, in case you have been under the covers for the past day or so, the legislature completed its work and went signee die Saturday night. We do have a new budget for the next biennium, as well as a new capital budget for the next biennium. Our friends at WASDA are busy, busy unpacking that, and they will get that information out to us this week sometime. So I expect that most of the Thursday, much of the Thursday call, WASDA call, may be taken up with discussion about the budget. But watch your email for information from WASDA, so that you can stay informed about the implications from this year's budget. There will be new programs that we'll have to enact, new requirements that we'll have to comply with, and then understanding, of course, you know, where the money, where the money is and where it's going. So I don't, I don't know that they're going to be calling a special session. I've not heard anything about that yet, but time, time will tell, I suppose. Anything else from board members under items of board interest? Trevor, do you have anything else for us?
Nothing further, and there is no need for executive session.
Okay, good. All right, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, then I'm going to adjourn this meeting and we'll see.
I was just going to chime in and just say that I did ask Barb to add the equity policy, the draft, and the slides from today to the Board Docs, so you guys will have those. It still is a work in progress. Like most policies, it's intended to live at the 30,000-foot level, and then there will be specific plans and things that are developed underneath that. One of the things that I've talked about in previous meetings is the desire to do an equity audit. And the equity audit will tell us how close and how far we are in many of the areas that are outlined in that. And then that's where we develop the specific plans and the measures in response to what turns out in that. So all of this is kind of connected in that pace, but we definitely are aware of those, the need for that specificity that Director Navarro is mentioning. But it's just a part of that kind of rollout. It's first, the policy is the expectation, then the audit of how far we are from the expectation, and then the actual plans with the measures of how you're going to move from where you are to where you want to be.
Perfect. Thank you Marcus. I know that probably most of us are going to want to spend a little bit of time with that equity, equity, that draft equity policy. It was, it's some good work, and your team is to be congratulated on how it looks so far. Anything else? Okay. I'm going to do this before the team goes on alert again. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. Sorry for the length of the meeting, but I think we got some good information and some good work done today. So have a wonderful week. Supposed to be glorious weather this week, and we'll see you all next week. Take care.